Because I don't read the news.
Any of you have a problem if I don't wear my mask? No, thank you. No, not at all. Thank you. Which I don't.
I'm really offended all where it really knows.
Could you give it to, could you keep your mask to Jerry please?
Well, welcome back. Oh, I should have checked.
We are ready to go Chair Hampton.
Thank you, Clerk Camus. Welcome back everyone for the afternoon section of our work session. We do have three big items to get to, but before we do that, we have for our county council today, an update on measure 114 activities.
Yes, thank you Chair. So as we discussed this morning, that there was a federal court action where the judge decided this morning not to issue a temporary restraining order, but recognized as the state conceded that the state was not ready to do the permitting. And so gave a reprieve of 30 days to do the permitting piece. Meanwhile, at noon today, a Harney Court Circuit Judge issued a temporary restraining order from enforcement by the state based on a state court action that was apparently happening in Harney County. So.
So what takes precedence?
Well, it, it, it's irrelevant when we have one circuit court judge issue a temporary restraining order against the state of Oregon from enforcing the measure it applies. Now, what will happen is the judge also gave about 10 days for the for everybody to brief whether he should issue a preliminary injunction to stop the the measure from going into effect. And so we're still in a limbo. Basically what the judge did was by issue a temporary restraining order to say timeout and then let us brief this further and then I'll make a further ruling on the actual measure, mother's constitution. So that's the last lamp as of 12 o'clock today. Well, I'll, I'll probably give you an update at 3:00.
Well, I'm not trying to be the source of up to date information, so that makes it really easy for me.
I will check in with Commissioner Phi and she'll give me an update.
No. But I will tell you, I think the federal judge had like so many pages about the opinion piece or the ruling of order.
Yes.
Thirty-three pages versus four. Oh, there you go. Three. Two, I take it back, two.
So I have a question Chair Hampton, if it's okay.
Yeah.
Just, just to clarify, and I think Commissioner Trees tried to ask this, but just for the viewing audience and for us curious minds, federal ruling came out this morning, 12 o'clock, which takes, like just repeat what you.
Well, so either judge has the ability to issue a temporary restraining order to stop the, the measure from going into effect. So it's not a one's higher than the other in this instance. Either one had the ability to do so. And obviously there was a federal case and a state case. And actually I should know that in the state case, the ruling was based upon the Oregon Constitution versus the federal Constitution. So different laws implicated.
So where's the measure stand after 12 o'clock today?
Yeah.
In, in.
It is not going to affect on Thursday. Okay. And like I said, the judge has ordered a timeout and is asking for further briefing to see if should issue a preliminary injunction, which is a longer timeout for everybody to be able to, you know, brief the court.
So of if I might, I over lunchtime was able to catch up with a little bit of media coverage and caught up with the Oregon Attorney General having made some sort of issuance Sunday evening with regard to the state's capacity to process. And that's, you made note of it, I think this morning around the state meeting at least until sometime in February
Correct.
to prepare the state system. So it sounds like there are various moving parts and lack of clarity will probably be the rule of the day for perhaps some number of months. So if folks are looking for up to date status in terms of lawsuits and actions on statewide measure, where would you recommend they go?
That's a really good question Chair. I, I think that the Attorney General is putting out press releases, so I would check the Attorney General's website to see what they're saying.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Alrighty, so the first of our three big topics for this afternoon is a finance update. So for our Ms. Kyle, with you being our CIO representative today, do I refer to you as our pro tem or?
I think just Ms. Kyle, Marnie?
All right. Well, we have our CIO Office Representative and our Chief Financial Officer and Treasurer as well. Take it away. Balancing the General Fund.
All right. Chair and Board of Commissioners, my name is Greg Munn. I'm in the County Finance Office and I'm the Your Treasurer and CFO. So today what I want to do is to give you an update. We were originally scheduled to give you an update last week, but due to time constraints on the agenda on Thursday, we pushed it out till today. So. So the purpose of today's presentation is to provide the board with an update on the status of the development of the county's FY24 budget, including upcoming next steps. So as you might recall, since Pat, this past summer, we have, Finance has been working with county leadership and departments to make modifications to improve our budget process. We've called that the Budget Redesign Process. This includes revised policies and procedures to progress the county toward best practices largely defined by the Government Finance Officers Association. I'll refer to that as GFOA. And some of those specifics include updating our contingency policies to provide fiscal stability and operational resiliency, removing functions from the General Fund that are more special revenue fund in nature or enterprise fund in nature. And to provide a clearer picture of our General Fund and more transparency to the other operations. So they're not muddled together all underneath the General Fund. The FY24, for FY24, this means for the first step is to remove the internal service functions. So HR, Finance, ITS, Facilities. Those are now all embedded in the General Fund and will come out and have their own enterprise fund essentially. So they'll operate on their own and have transparency for each one. Additionally, each of the departments that purchases an internal service, they will have a line item in their budget that says Finance. They'll say HR. So there'll be a very direct relationship between the services provided to our departments and the service providers. Other functions will be considered moving those functions out of the General Fund in the future budgets. We will standardize budget adjustment, adjustment practices to three times per year. So this includes the normal budget development process and then two supplemental opportunities. Unless there's an emergency, of course, we need to deal with that, but we'll just standardize all of those budgetary adjustment functions to three times per year. We'll create a capital improvement program, which actually is underway and scheduled for Board Review on the 13th. I'll just give you a little preview. There's been a team of half a dozen folks across county, different interests, different departments that have come together and really worked hard and really worked well to put this together. Theme in ITS has been sort of the hub of that project and has felt a really nice presentation that we'll get to share with you next week. Another change, one of the specifics is to improve our analytical and decision support to the board to provide future fiscal impact on decisions being considered so that anytime there's an item before the board, you'll have an idea of what the future financial impact would be, whether it's this year, next year, or five years out. Create a long-term fiscal impact forecast. You know, know where we're going financially, increase our lead time to make changes and eliminate surprises. Part of this success, all of this will be defined by one of a big effort that'll be in the Budget Office is to achieve the GFOA's distinguished budget award. We, we haven't done that, but that is essentially, the, the budget document is probably could be our most important policy document that we produce every year. And the GFOA's award allow, gives us a target for best practices. So we're going to move towards those best practices. They actually review your budget document. They score it. They give you recommendations for improvement. And that's what we're going to be moving towards this next year. And then to dovetail the budget process in with the evolution of the county strategic plan, which you've heard about, and eventually a performance management system to provide a positive feedback loop. So you can envision that graphic that we shared with the strategic plan in the center and these components of the management system around those will work to continue to work in that direction so that the budget process is dovetailed in a, in a part of that process. So as part of preparing the upcoming budget process, staff reviewed the current status of the county's general fund in light of the emergency reductions taken to balance the FY23 budget last spring. Initial findings were shared with the board and later formally with the county leadership on November 9th. That was the white paper we, we met individually about. We met with county leadership team on November 9th. And the presentation I'll share with you any, here in a minute is actually that exact same presentation. And since that time, we've conducted several information and Q and A sessions with county staff to help create an understanding of the county's general fund status and proposed steps forward to create a balanced FY24 proposed budget that you'll see in the springtime. So today I will share the presentation shared with the county leadership team on November 9th. And then I'll roll into a status of the FY24 budget process, including the upcoming, upcoming major process dates. So if I can redirect your attention to the screen, this is, as I mentioned, a copy of the presentation that was given to the county leadership team on November 9th. The, the purpose of this is right. So here were the discussion topics. Wanted to make sure we had a clear purpose and expected outcome of the meeting. There's some confusion, I think, about what's the difference between a budget imbalance and a budget design, process designs? We want to make sure we talked about those two things. And then just a summary of our general fund problem. So looking back five years, how did we get to where we are now? What, what happened in FY23 as a reminder? And where are we going moving forward into FY24 and beyond? Communication plan and questions and input from the leadership team. So the purpose of the meeting was to focus on the imbalance in the general fund. And we wanted to make sure we provided a good baseline, a good clear understanding of the problem and the next steps. So we had a great opportunity to do that. The leadership team, we even did a almost like an affinity exercise with yellow sticky notes where questions could be asked. We collected all those questions, the ones that weren't answered. In that meeting, we were able to develop a, a Q and A document that we've used to move forward with. And a plan, eventually the purpose was to plan to correct the FY24 structural general fund budget imbalance and make sure that we had an alignment in our future revenue and expenditure growth rates. So here's a simple graphic that the attempt is to define the difference between budget process redesign and, and correcting the budget imbalance. So on the left-hand side, you'll see the redesign, which I won't go through all the details, but effectively it's process oriented. How do we go about building the budget? What's the best way to demonstrate our financials in the long run? This is something that's going to take a few years, but we're really targeting what is, what is done in industry, GFOA best practices and using that more or less as a target as we move forward. The imbalance, the budget imbalance, that was nothing new that was identified here recently. The, I know the board dealt with that in the springtime in terms of balancing FY23 budget. But more specifically is identifying or, or realizing that our expenses were outpacing our growth in revenue. We have a lack of appropriate contingency and reserves. We have a lack of funding for capital maintenance and our operating expenditures. Some of our operating expenditures, expenditures are not aligned with our ongoing expenditures are not aligned with ongoing revenue. They're more aligned with one-time revenue. So we want to make sure we address that as well. So here's a summary of the challenges we have in the general fund. One is we have a gap that we fund, a $43 million gap that's funded by our strategic investment program revenue. I'll get into that more later. Our SIP, that balance in that fund has been declining. It's currently at about $11 million. Our expenditures in the general fund are outpacing our growth in revenue. You can see the numbers there, 7.7% growth in expenditures, 5.8% average growth in revenue. Our contingency is underfunded by about $16 million. And the initial roll forward analysis of current service level moving forward to FY24 is we're, we have a gap of about $25 million in our general fund. And here's a good graphic that explains, shows the history and over the last five years. I think some of you have probably seen this. I shared it last night. Effectively, the, the, the couple of lines really look at is that red line, those, that's our expenses in our general fund. Those are actual, it's actual data that came out of our general ledger. And if you take those numbers and look at the changes year over year, over the last five years, the average growth rate per year is 7.7%. The dark green line are, is our non, or is our net operating revenue. And when I say net operating revenue, what I mean by that is all revenue in the general fund less the amount of SIP funds that we use to balance the budget. So you can see that that has been growing at about 5.8% per year on average. So a couple of things that this highlights is our revenues are growing slower than our expenses and we have a gap in our revenues that we've been using SIP to fund over the last five years.
Greg, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
If you wanted. I suspect that we're paying as you go on any CIPs. So this doesn't factor in any large capital improvements we need. Is that correct? And these expenditure numbers, you don't have any.
No, there's no.
For CIP projects.
No.
You don't have any funding for CIP projects. If you were to factor those, these numbers would be broader.
Traditionally, and I'm going to say traditionally because my historical background is about not far, is I believe we've been funding facilities at and someone correct me if I'm wrong here. I believe it's been $2 million a year out of the general fund. Pay as I go, as we go.
All right.
And a million dollars for ITS.
All right.
Yeah.
I want to say that was right. Okay. So that has been, yeah. And then there's been gaming funds as well. So if you take, so all this graph is, is a stretch with the same information for the last five years and looking forward another five years. So that red line growing at the 7.7%, if you extrapolate that out over five years, you can see where the line goes, that dotted line. The green line being the net operating piece, you can see where it goes at 5.8%. That funding gap right now, since FY, well, even before FY17, but we've been using SIP, which is a in lieu of property tax. It's a perfectly legitimate revenue to use for day-to-day operations. But we're at $43 million in FY22 use of SIP. We bring in about $43 million in SIP every year. So we've maxed out our, our use of SIP to subsidize the general fund. Pushing that out, nothing else changed. That number doubles in five years to $90 million. So again, two challenges face us. One is the imbalance in the growth rates and the structural gap between the two that we're using SIP to fund. Now, this is a messy graph. But I'm going to point you, there's just a couple of, a couple of key points I want to make on this graph here. This is our, this is some SIP history. SIP Fund Strategic Investment Program history. And the, the one line I would like you first to look at is the, I'm going to test this, is this dash line right here, the dashed green line. That represents our forecast for SIP revenue over this forecast period. And what happens, and you know this, is that we have agreements that have a beginning and an end date and have an investment amount. So that FY25 right there, you can see it drops off from about a little over $40 million to down under $30 million. This is when one of the SIPs expire. The green line, the solid green line is our actual revenue that we've received. Our actual revenue is going fairly well in terms of matching with our projection. But the concerning part is, is this dark red line, that's our expenditure line. So we've been spending more or less most of our SIP every year over the last five or six years. The challenge ends up being, as you can imagine, in a year or so, when that SIP drops off. And all of a sudden we'll have a revenue line for SIP that's underneath an expenditure line for SIP. Any questions on this one before I move on?
Yeah, I, I do have Greg. And it's not necessarily on this, but I thought you've probably answered this question for me before, but I can't remember. I thought when the, when the the value of the assets drop off the SIP, they go back on the tax rolls. So there'd be not quite the significant drop. Is that not true?
It's, it's not a one for one. It's not real property. It's equipment and it depreciates.
Oh, okay.
There, there is, there, there's a ratio. I don't know what it is, but it's not significant. It's a good question. So for fiscal 23, this is a, a picture of the infamous page 15, which outlines in our budget document the adjustments that were made, about $31 million to balance the budget in FY23. These were emergency modifications. It equated to a little bit under 10% of our budget at the time. And those included a $3.7 million vacant positions were frozen and it's one of those, it's, it's right there. And so, and the reason why I highlight that is because the, the, that's a question, the, the question comes up is how well are we doing against that? I mean, that was one of our targets of several, but it was one that we had control over. So we worked with our friends over in IT and they helped us develop this vacancy forecast tool that projects out where we think we might be by the end of the year. And so these are, you can see the high-tech circle that I drew there. And that one. So this one here, this was at the time, this is a real-time model, but when I printed this out, it was early November. That showed the difference between where we were actually spending versus our budget. Yeah. So this was November. Yeah, those are months. So it's November. And this is projecting out to July. So really what the question here is, and this is a great tool to answer, is how well are we doing against that $3.7 million target? And the answer is right now is we are looking at about 4.3 million. Because as you know, as we move forward, things change the day after you set up budgets. We need a little bit of flexibility to say, well, we maybe need to hire this one position, but instead of, or in, in lieu of that position, we'll take reductions here, or we have some vacancy savings, but it helps us manage moving forward. So this has been a good tool. So we're on target with, with, with that reduction there. So moving into FY24, these are some of the basic assumptions. We'll go over this more as we move into the budget development. We have a, we took all of those $31.1 million reductions as they applied to the budget and put them back in the base for FY24. And the reason why we did that is we wanted to we wanted to start at a, at a base level that we were before, we took those emergency reductions. So bring those back in. We also added some cost assumptions, including the addition of a 4.5% COLA. We assumed steps at about half of the folks would be eligible, eligible for steps. So that's two and a half percent. Our, our PERS increase is 9%. That was the estimate. That doesn't mean the PERS rates increase at 9%. It means they, the purse costs go up by 9%. A little bit of preliminary good news is I think that this, that number is going to be lower, which lower is always better. Doesn't solve all our problems, but it's better. And we've, we've assumed health insurance rates will increase by 12%. You heard about paid leave Oregon and the cost to implement that program. That's built into these assumptions. We've also assumed no increase in materials and services. Those budgets are flat going across as we start to build those for FY24. It, it does not include contractual increases, and that's a significant point. And the reason why I put it up there is particularly in our technology group who manages our software licensing across the county. We have contractually built-in increases to pay for software. They're not something we can easily get out of, but we did not know what those were at the time to build those in, but we will recognize those as we move forward.
Your M and S is not going to be flat unless you're going to stop using some products because you, you have no control over your vendors. And their increases are, I can assure you, seven to 10, 11%. So are, are you simply saying that you only can use your pencils on certain days and one pad of paper per month? Or how, how are you going to get M and S being zero?
Well, it's a baseline to start. And as we're talking about software licensing and maintenance agreements and those sorts of things that are contractually were obligated.
About power lights. You're talking about heat. You're talking about a lot of stuff that. Wow. Thanks Northwest Naturalist went up in their costs or projecting PG is going to go up. So I, I don't know.
So there's, yeah, those are all factors that we, that, that we have the opportunity to increase through decision packages. But those, we don't know what those are to apply across the county. So we're going to rely on each of our finance folks from our departments to be able to come up with those. And the last bullet point there is it does not include any new critical facility debt service. So where does the general fund forecast number come from? The $25 million, it comes from a very small spreadsheet that I won't go into any detail. But I will point you to this circle over here. But effectively, there's two pieces to this. This is what gets us to a balanced budget, 25.3 million, 7.1%.
Just now.
And in the future, we will need to look at other adjustments to get our contingency up to best practices. So the projection includes most of our known increases. There's no increases for expanded programs. There's no new FTEs. There's no new capital improvements or debt service. And it, this only closes the gap for one year. It doesn't address the change in cost moving forward. So next two slides are strategies. One is the immediate strategies and the next one will be more long-term. So as I mentioned a moment ago, our immediate strategy is to balance the budget. And right now that's, that's 7.1%, $25.3 million gap. That's an early estimate. I expect that that's going to change one way or another as we move forward and learn more. And that's why we've asked departments to present cut scenarios of 4%, 7% and 10%. This doesn't apply across the county, but only to those functions, those departments that a portion or more of their funding, at least a portion of their funding comes from the general fund. In terms of sorting all of this out, we'll, we, we, we have tools that we can utilize, look at reductions that are deep and also ones that cover more of a breadth. But we want to make sure we look deep at some of our functions, particularly as they compare to the, the core functions of what a county, and there's, that's very subjective, is to provide before we just do a spread across the board. So we'll do both of those. There is, I think we've had this conversation several times, but the assumption is that this will impact service levels. There is, uh, I think we've had this conversation several times, but the assumption is that this will impact service levels. There's no, there's no way we can make these kind of reductions. Less expenditures without having an impact to service levels. We'll use position cost management techniques. That's a fancy word for saying. Uh, maybe we freeze vacancies again. Maybe we, uh, we. Maybe there's vacant, uh, maybe for certain positions as we did, we're, we'll be frozen moving forward. Some of those sorts of things. We, the last thing, we've talked about this with staff as well is the very last. Option is layoffs. We want to avoid layoffs at all poss, there's a possible. Uh, there's very, there's various other things we can use in terms of attrition, retirements, people moving on that we want to use first. And we want to continue to implement our budget redesign strategies. Long term strategies. We need to resolve the, the, the gap, the, the growth gap difference between expenditures and revenues moving forward. We need to fully fund our contingency to four months worth of property taxes in the general fund. Right now, we're not there. Uh, create a policy around SIP. How, how much of that do we want to make available for spending versus a, uh. Contingency balance moving forward in the event that SIPs go away, which they could. Examine, um, our mistip and library funding practices that go back several years. Um, align our funding and service, services to mandates and desired community outcomes. I think that, that. That'll be part of, that'll be a big component of our strategic plan as we move forward. And I already mentioned this, but move our functions that are largely funded by special revenues out of the general fund into their own special revenue or enterprise funds. Uh, explore ways to control health, uh, growth in our health insurance costs. Implement, uh, best pack practices on reserve policies. Make sure we have, uh, funds that are appropriately reserved. And create a capital improvement plan and funding options, which again, we're already working on that and we'll be back to you in the next week or so.
I ask you a quick question. Back to the former slide. It says control growth in health insurance costs. It, is it control or manage? I mean, and the reason I'm asking is I, I don't understand how you can really control. It, so, and I'm, and I understand control the impact of health. Their costs. So I, I'm just asking a question.
I, I would say maybe both and, and one example is to go self insured.
Okay. Yes.
So you effectively transfer the risk and the profits from public sector or the private sector into your own. But you have to assume some risk along with that as well.
I was thinking about not, not being self.
But beyond that. Um, I feel like this has been said before and it's like, so tell me what's different if we're not going to. Self insure. And the county has already been trying to do this for years and years. You know.
The only other option is you control benefits and you control ads price.
Okay, that's, and that's what. Okay, that's what I was getting at too.
That's the hydraulic at price and.
Yep, it sounded to me like you were going to control the cost coming in from the provider. It's like, I don't know how you do that.
I'd like to learn how to do that.
Yeah, I know, kidding.
You call it deductibles.
Deductibles, yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's on the benefit side. Yeah, absolutely. It's a good question. Thank you. Okay, communication plan. So this obviously is a significant amount of change and as we learned from our, uh. Uh, change management consultant is we need to communicate in seven, seven times in seven different ways. So I think we've maybe done a two by two now and we're working on the rest of those. But, uh, initially it's, it's explaining the change and our focus on our internal folks, making sure our staff understand. And, uh, we've been doing, we've, we're doing that and we'll continue to do that through month, uh, monthly messages. That have already begun, um, in this last month. And we'll do some key dates, key updates through the Verizon's page. And we've continued to be, one of the things we've been fairly successful with is just to have these random ad hoc meetings between finance and departments. They could be meetings of three people. There could be meetings of a whole department. Or anything in between. And so we just left that open and working with the A C A S to get the message out as best we can. Uh, second to last bullet is meet with the board on twelve one to discuss communications and engagement. At twelve month, one meeting turned into today. That's actually, uh, twelve five. And the question, twelve six, twelve six, thank you. Uh, the days run together sometimes. Uh, and then the question to the leadership team is what help, what support do you need to help communicate this from? The, uh, the leadership team and CFO. So we've been working on that.
Can we go back one slide for a second? Because I want to make sure that when we go to your next steps, I'm focused forward. On the. Second bullet. How far off are we from fully funding the contingency to four month property tax? Since I can't read that.
I'm going to read it for you. I'm just going to circle it. It's the number at the bottom right hand corner of this graphic here, and that's forty one.
More million.
Sixteen more million.
So there's currently forty one million there and it needs sixteen more.
Needs fifty seven.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Got lost there. Sorry about that. So next steps. Yeah, the first one is just create these reduction scenarios and, uh, staff's working on those right now. And the definitions of base budget and decision packages, we probably don't need to talk about those too much, but that was really the purpose of that was to help county leadership understand. The separation of the budget process from how we've done it in the past to a base budget. Which is your current service level budget plus any additions that you would have, requests, new programs, additional F T E. Um, those sorts of things. And then the last bullet there is an idea that's come up in. A couple of different, uh, venues, but is to create a budget transformation task force. Uh, that's, uh. That, that could comprise, um. Uh, staff, internal finance staff, internal department heads. It could, it could comprise folks from the outside, professionals who do, who work in the financial area. Who could come in and give us a set of eyes and be an advisory committee to. Leadership, to the budget office, to the CFO on, you know, what are some different thoughts about moving forward with this transformation? Because this will take, uh, this is a three to five year process at least.
Can I ask a question about the decision packages? So particularly under Ms. Angie's leadership, we've tried to move away. We've tried to move towards. Uh, one Washington County and cross organizational teams. And a lot of collaboration. And I'm really pleased to see how that is shaping up. Uh, we have different examples of it. The H H S health folks working more with our. Transportation folks, L U T folks, uh, came up again, what, last Tuesday with our climate work. Uh, you know, it, it goes beyond what I just described. So as you, as the. The leadership team. The assistant county administrators and the department managers work. Will you be working on somewhat department based decision packages or? Or, or is it going to be a whole variety? And then you'll come up with a four percent, a seven percent, ten. I mean, everything's on the board, right?
I think that's, I think, I think your last statement is accurate. Everything is on the board. We, we had to put some boundaries around this and so, and some structure. So that's where we came up with the four, seven and ten. Uh, some, some areas, as you can imagine, might take a ten percent, others would take four. It's entirely possible that there would be a strategic decision to reinvest more elsewhere. So, but it gives us some options to deal with as we start to move forward.
And, and for the purposes of anyone who's listening or watching this today or subsequently. I talked about the word bored because I whiteboard a lot. Right? That doesn't mean reductions. It's all about problem solving and problem solving together. It's not like people need to be afraid that, oh my gosh, something's going to be cut. No, it's all about problem solving. And how do we go about achieving the goals and providing our services? And, and planning and problem solving with information. So, thank you.
And that's, that's actually interesting. Uh, so yesterday we had our budget kickoff and I started it with a quote from Ted Lasso.
My favorite.
And he talks about change. And basically the gist of the quote was that all, that, that change almost. Always brings about something good. It rarely brings out about something that's not good. And so part of that message that I was trying to send is embrace this change. Because we have the opportunity to do some things that are better and moving in the long run. So. That was my goal there. Okay. So that was the end of that. I just want to give you a couple other updates in terms of moving forward. I mentioned that. We had our budget kickoff meeting yesterday. We had approximately ninety staff on the call. Across the county. So if you can imagine, I, I tried to envision what that looks like if we were in a room with ninety people. You know, on, on Zoom or on Teams, you get a little circle that says ninety. So it was, I tried to envision staff across the county. So the purpose of the meeting is to review the budget development steps. Assumptions, financial conditions, due dates. And this is where the budget, this is really where the, the core level budget work begins. And I've had the opportunity to sit in. I actually wanted to see how H H S develops their staffing budgets, so. I virtually had the opportunity to look over somebody's shoulder and they showed me their spreadsheets. And it's a lot of work. And so, uh, it was super interesting to see the work that they have to go through in the iterations to actually produce a budget that comes before the board to be approved. Couple of key dates is, uh, February sixth. So yesterday was kickoff, the fifth, so February sixth, two months, those budgets are due back in Questica, back into the budget office. And then, uh, finance budget will take some time to put all of this together and we'll begin the review with leadership a month later on March eighth. So that's when the beginning of taking the requested budgets and morphing them into a proposed budget with county leadership will begin. It's on March eighth. And in terms of the board and meeting, our next review is scheduled for January fifth roundtable. And we will again give you an update on the budget process as we go. The plan there is just to be iterative and keep you up to speed with where things are going and what we're learning. This is all, this will all probably change as we move forward. We'll have the opportunity to discuss budget priorities and to review the communication framework. Including town hall and listening sessions. Questions? That's, that's all I've got.
Couple of comments and one question. Greg, thanks for bringing it. To an understandable level. I still don't think it's completely understandable to public. But you've done your best, I think, to, to, to present some things that have been going on for a while. And I, I want to commend you for that. I think that's a, a very. Good thing. So I would, I would say that. Uh, secondly, on your slide about this, this, uh, helpful group outside, I, I've worked with people all over the states in your position. Uh, and it's a pretty lonely position. You don't have really a peer group. Uh, you got a lot of colleagues you work with, but no peer group. Um, I would hope that you would seriously consider a blue ribbon panel of not users, because what, what we ultimately philosophize. Why I decided to spend it on is different than people who have the, the, uh, finance background to sit there and share best practices in their organization. So. Um, if you need a list of people, I know people who are in various large organizations around here who volunteer time. And, uh, it would be interesting to have you have some help and assistance in regard to, uh, at least getting. The, the groundwork, you know, I, I, what, what are the hydraulics of all this? And we all have to make the decision of how it's going to be spent, what we're going to do. So I'd certainly encourage that bullet that you had and having some outside folks. And come in as experts, so to speak, and, and assist you. Um, my, my question is, is you're focused on the general fund. I, I get that, but in a lot of organizations, including this, um, general fund is just a part of the overall budget. Um, and I, and I appreciate your willingness and, and thoughtfulness to. Move some of these functions at the special revenue funds, because they really are. And look at the general fund subsidy, but having said that. If there are large contractions or expansions in special revenue funds. That could help solve some of the problem. For instance, if you doubled your outside revenue in a particular special revenue, maybe we could repurpose some staff. And some of their costs to those, those areas are conversely. If they don't get those grants back, we got more contraction than you're talking about. So is, is part of your plan not only the general fund, but to look holistically at all funds of the county and saying. What, what do we be looking at? I mean, it. As, as I've said, two percent on a billion dollars, about twenty million dollars. So that's what you're faced every year with. If you take a look at, you know, SIP falling off, it's gets to thirty million, forty million. Uh, any raise in costs above two percent, you're looking at fifty, sixty million dollars in shortfall. And now, now we're talking some real money. And so, uh, I, I'm, I'm hoping. As you look at this holistically, it's just not the general fund. It's all funds and saying, what are we going to do? Because I. Think this board and they all had comments along that line. They're interested in, in tackling the problem. They want to shoulder with you, want to be there with you.
Yeah.
Just need to know the entire severity of the problem, where it's at. To thoughtfully deal with it. Does that make?
Yeah, no, that makes a lot of sense. And I think we're getting, I mean, budget, so budget redesign. It really is addressing is countywide. The challenge with the general fund is large and immediate. But there's other challenges that we'll have moving forward. And we, you know, we've talked a little bit about SIP. We have, um, some critical capital. Projects that we need to figure out a way to fund through some debt. There's a question about, you know, older agreements that we had, particularly with Mistup and the library. Are those still relevant? And, and honestly, at some point, we have to, once we have a chance to get our expenditures in order and feel like we're, we, we're really where we are. We want to be in terms of meeting the needs. Um, in our strategic plan, then we will need to look at revenue. But I, I don't think we can look at revenue until we really have looked at expenses really closely, make sure we're, we're good there.
Can I ask you one more question? That is, it's not all this board is going to be here in three years from now, but you, you take a look and you're saying two to three years out. I, I respectfully would say this is a one year issue. This is not a three, I, I mean, you can't solve it all. But I think the severity of the issues and the direction have to be solved pretty quickly. Because you can't sit there and say, whoops, we now found that we're another twenty million down and ask these poor remaining board members. Figure out, we, where are we going to get this one? I, I, I think you need to know the trajectory. So that we can start planning. Does, does that make sense? I mean, I, I'm not a last minute kind of need your guy who said, well, we're trying to. Think we need to be looking at, and we need to look now.
Yeah. So I agree on the general fund it is right now. And the longer trajectory we have, the longer glide path we have for change, the better off we're going to be. But to me, it's all about making sure we're doing the right thing and having stability. Which means no surprises.
I'm not sure if I follow you. Um, I'm not sure this is just a one year problem. Because as we've saw in the graphs, and I don't have the packet slides in front of me anymore. The. S I P subsidy to the general fund was forty three. No, that's the revenue.
Yeah.
Uh, and so we already need an infusion of sixteen million just to reach the four month. Contingency.
Now, you know, I said it wasn't a one year problem.
Oh.
No, I'm, I'm saying you got, you got a forty million dollar, you're saying twenty five. I think you got closer to thirty. Roy's projections, thirty to forty million dollar now. And I think you've got a twenty million dollar problem going forward every year.
And, and that's not including all the capital improvement.
Yeah, two percent on a billion dollars to figure that out, twenty million bucks a year.
I, I think you're in the ballpark.
Yeah. But I don't think you guys are in disagreement.
No, I thought you said I said one year. No, I know it's not one year. I'm saying one year to, to figure out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, yeah, I'm with you. Yeah, I slipped a cog, that's all. Yeah, I slipped a cog, that's all.
So not to be, not to be the bearer of of bad news, because we are making progress. It's just going to take a while to get there. And I've I'm I'm seeing little bits of progress, little bits of a hope as we transition. It's just going to take a while. So we're going to keep working at it. Keep coming back to the board, keep giving information, updating you on where we're at. And hopefully, we'll have we'll have more good news as we move forward.
Other commissioners, thoughts, questions at this point?
I have a question. Perhaps it's maybe a comment. I'm I'm always having a hard time figuring out, is it a comment or a question? But I guess my common question is, is there any program that you and Tanya discussed that should be exempt from the reduction request before the seven percent reduction asked to programs? And I'm wondering, where's the sheriff's office fit in on this reduction considering some of the rumble that's been happening around shortage of staff? And the emails that we get around some of the pots that are being closed due to staffing issues, I I think might be the easiest way to say it.
So so the first question there is, there really isn't anything that's exempt. I mean, we really need to examine all of our operations in the general fund. And as I say that, I would say the one one area that probably is exempt is debt service, because we can't, we have to pay it. So we have payments we have to make and we can't, unless we refinance those. And I'm pretty sure right now that our rates moving forward are not at nearest favorable as they were when we financed back in twenty sixteen. So. And the sheriff is is part of the general fund and is, you know, he's he's going to present his four, seven, and ten percent reductions as well. And again, that doesn't necessarily mean where we end up taking them. It just gives us options to look at as we move forward to build a proposed budget.
And the way I think I understood my conversations with you and Tanya, just just to clarify, is this cut or this reduction, it's permanent versus what we did last year, which is to spend or free, you know, figure out different ways without doing a permanent cut, which is what you were alluding to, the layoffs. Is that? There a correlation between those?
No, I'm not sure I understand. My my comment on layoffs is that's the last, that's our last option. And we want to avoid that at all possible cost. We don't want to move to layoffs. We want to, there's a bunch of other tools in the toolbox that we can use before we get there. But the only reason why I mentioned that is because when you start talking about budget reductions, most people normally go to layoffs. And that's understandable. It's just the way things are. And so I'm I'm really saying that is that's our last, that's one of the last options we would want to exercise.
Yeah, and I think I was just clarifying this reduction is permanent reduction.
Yes, it would need to be. We need to restructure our growth rates and we need to reduce that gap that I was sharing you, sharing with you.
Thank you, Greg. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Question, though, in terms of what is part of the the problem solving steps? What I do expect to be on that whiteboard or in the data set is there are some grants that have, we've applied for and received that expected a certain local match and a certain degree of performance. And they have end dates for those. So I'm assuming that what you'll be working with is the completion of those grants, right? There's what we have to fund this year to satisfy those grants.
Yes, that's right. Yeah. So those would be considered contractual obligations along with.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions at this time? So one question that I have, um, it may not be appropriate to answer today. But I'm, part of what I do is I'm a look ahead person. And the degree of problem solving that has to happen this year for a proposed budget is different than where we've been in prior years. The magnitude of the gap is much larger. So we we can't just repeat using the same one time. So we have to go through the the aspects that you've scoped out here and laid out here. What I'm trying to think forward, commissioners, is we know we'll get a proposed budget delivered to us the latter part of April. Okay. Like the twenty-seventh, twenty-eight kind of timeframe. And we'll have two weeks to consume that before we start budget committee meetings. So there's really this time between January and talk about, you know, the first or second week of April where the C A O is going through her fine tuning with her staff to actually give us that final proposed budget. I imagine if we don't address it between January and April, it will cause me to be in the situation of having a new proposed budget and wonder what the heck are we investing in with this proposed budget? What do I need to understand is changing and won't be done or will be done? And so that's what I'm going to need to understand right away with that proposed budget. So I'm curious about what sort of process you're thinking about that we will have at our disposal, either leading up to the proposed budget or after the proposed budget.
Are you referring to like a red line version changes or?
I don't know. That's you're into the tactics and on higher level. So one scenario I imagine is we might get some brief updates, but worst case are kind of left in the dark. And so we get it and it's like, here it is. And it's going to be one heck of a wild ride trying to understand that. And we basically wouldn't have time to do anything else for a good couple of weeks, except to understand what's in there. Or you can do something different so that it's not quite to that extent. But that we have some visibility into the problem solving along the way. And variations on the theme. So I don't have any specific requests at the time. But we do know what our experience was like last year, where different techniques were tried and how that played out. So as you and Ms. Angie move forward with the leadership team, I think you want to think about what sort of approach you take. Otherwise, from the end of April through the end of May, it could, we could do nothing else but budget and budget committee meetings. And I'm not sure that is going to enable us to get all the other things done that the organization might want us to do as it has done in the past. So I don't have any specific ideas for you.
So I I can offer you two points as a reply to that. One is that whatever we come up with, we want to document it very well. We want to, just like we did on page fifteen, we want, because the memory fades the day after it's inked. And we want to make sure we track this as we move forward. Part of that is to know whether or not we're successful with that. Did that, did that result, did those reductions result in what we thought? Was there an adverse impact that we didn't think about? We want to be able to track that. And we should be doing that as we move forward each year, whether there's additions or changes in the budget. So so that's one, one thing that I can say is that we will track very carefully. We will know exactly what it is that we've, the reductions we've made. The the other part about in terms of timing, I had a old boss of mine, a budget director, that he he had his five principles. One of those is, he said, you cut your deals before you get to the table. And so there will be, my goal is to make sure that if we do anything, we over communicate how how we're doing is in terms of moving along. So there's no surprises. You know, this is like balancing your checkbook daily. There's no surprises. And so we want to get way ahead of that curve in both tracking what we're doing and making sure the board's informed of of where we're at.
So we have three budget committees. Right? So we'll have to figure out to what their experience might be like, or he'll have to figure it out.
Okay, the transfer, transformational task force, I turned over your, the task force you're recommending. Is that internal or?
So it it could be internal, it could be internal or external, as Commissioner Rogers suggested.
Who decides that then?
It's it was just an idea that came up. And so we haven't, we haven't really put any more thought to it than they're just gathering ideas. I like both the ideas. I think they're both, they're both great.
Let me tell you what I, and we all have our, come from different backgrounds. To me, the external blue ribbon is simply to help provide resources, not to form policies or doing. So you need an internal one anyway. But an external to to share ideas and to have somebody talking to good Greg over there, other than Greg. As I say, they don't have a lot of peer group. I don't think you have a lot of peer group to talk to.
And you know, when you do things along, for a long time, in a certain way, you have a tendency to not make changes and maybe not see, you have some blind spots. And so I think what Commissioner Rogers is suggesting is maybe an idea to expose those. I think it's an idea.
It'll be a first.
It would be. Many organizations have blue ribbon panels like that.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Well, let's move right along then to the next topic on the agenda, which is still related to money, but for a specific department arena and a specific service set. So this is with regard to current planning and building services. Do we have an outside speaker? Oh.
Yes, it's on Zoom.
I didn't realize we were, we kept you waiting out there in Zoom land. My apologies. Take it away.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm Stephen Roberts, Land Use and Transportation Director. With me is Erin Wardell, our Planning and Development Services Manager. Both current planning and building services are a part of her division portfolio. And joining us today is our consultant, who's been working with us on an assessment of these two areas. Deborah Dunn with Synergy Resources Group. And so in terms of our work or our flow today, I'm just going to say a few things to just kick us off. Erin's going to cover some context slides at the beginning. Deborah will actually run through and give us an overview of her assessment work. And then Erin and I will close with a few next steps to get you up to speed with what we're proposing to come back to you with. And I think with that, I'll turn it over to Erin.
Thank you. So as Stephen said, we are here today to provide you with an overview of the current planning and building services, functions and services. We are then going to be reviewing our third-party consultant assessment of these work groups and then outline some of our next steps. We're not making specific recommendations today for any fee increases. Rather, we're sharing the information and seeking your guidance on what we do with this information next. I also want to point out before we start looking at specific numbers that our outside assessment was a point in time analysis. And so some of the numbers may look a little bit different than, say, our current fiscal year numbers. And we'll highlight some of those differences when we, when we see them. But if you've been looking through the materials, maybe noticed a difference in F T E numbers, that's probably what happened. So at the end of the presentation, we'll be coming back to you with these policy questions. And the questions are, does your board have any questions about the information that we shared today? Does your board have any questions about the assessment that was conducted? And does your board support staff moving forward with next steps to achieve our cost recovery goals? I want to start by setting some context around Washington County and the services that we provide. This slide shows a graphic of our county area as well as some of our population statistics. The slide shows in gray rural Washington County, in blue urban unincorporated Washington County, and then in white, the area covered by the cities of Washington County. Washington County's urban unincorporated area population is two hundred and fifteen thousand. I know you all know this. If it was a city, it would be the second largest city in the state of Oregon. Our rural population is about twenty-six thousand, which is larger than about twelve Oregon counties in total population and larger than several of the cities within Washington County. So we have a very large population area.
Quick question, since a lot of what current planning and building services does is around land and partitions, plats and all that other term of art that I never get right. I assume that the seven twenty-six square acres is the entirety of the Washington County geographic area. What percentage is, or what portion of it? How many acres are in urban unincorporated area? And what acreage is in the rural acre acreage?
I don't know that off the top of my head. We can look that up for you and get that number.
I have numbers from the older data, what were they called? Data bits, data snapshot.
Snacks. Yeah, yes.
Data snack.
I think it's about five hundred and something square miles is rural. And so we have
Yeah, I'd really substantial. I'd be interested in an update on those numbers. That's all, because I know there was a U G B expansion in there somewhere.
And and part of the reason this is relevant for setting this context in terms of the size of the county is that for particularly our building services team, they're inspectors, they're out in the field. And so they have this really large geographic area that they cover. It's not the same as covering a city where maybe it's ten minutes to drive across. Sometimes they're in their car for hours going out and doing rural inspections. So that's an important piece of this context. It's also important that Washington County is just different than any other county in the state of Oregon, most similar to Clackamas County. Most Oregon counties do not have urban unincorporated areas of any size, and we do.
Thank you.
So a little bit more about current planning and building and the work that they do. So current planning and building services are necessary government functions. They implement required state and local codes and regulations for land use and building. They enforce our building codes and our planning regulations, and these protect our communities. They reduce casualties and they reduce costs and damages. Strong planning and building services are a benefit to our community. They're really important for our economic vitality, for growth, and for our jobs and taxpayers. Both of these work groups operate on cost recovery models supported by fees for services. So we're coming back to our county graphic to talk a little bit more about our service geography. So in the long term, Washington County will provide building and current planning services to our rural area. Right now, we also provide those services to our urban unincorporated areas. We expect those areas will eventually annex into the cities, but until that happens, they're a part of our service geography. There's no other government agency that will step in and do the service for us in the rural area. Again, that's ours for the long term. And until the cities step forward, we are the government agency to cover the unincorporated area. A little bit more about our current planning work group and what they do. Current planning serves our urban and incorporated rural areas. They cover all development review and assistance functions at one hundred percent fee-supported, as fee-supported activities. They inform our developers and property owners about our regulations. They review four hundred plus land development proposals each year, and they implement our comprehensive plan documents, including our community development code. They average one hundred and sixty land use code compliance complaints each year. This particular service does receive a funding subsidy from the general fund. They also do floodplain management and some other community services as a small piece of their work, which receives no dedicated funding. We handle about fifty thousand customer and constituent inquiries each year. These are oftentimes a fairly simple call. What can I develop on my property sort of questions? It's not related to a paying development application, but we try to assist them and answer their questions. Right now, our fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget F T E is sixteen point three one, but our actual staffing is thirteen point six seven. So we have vacancies within this work group.
So I have a question along the way. And let me preface that with at some point, there's analysis paralysis, there's ask, I'd be asking for too much data. And I did try to find things in the document, but But you the document provides so much information. I I decided, oh, I need this to just be present presented to me first, and then I'll start to absorb it. But I'm curious, of the 160 land use code complaints per year on average, generally, right? Generally, approximately. So not qualified, not disagree. Are what percentage of those are from the rural area versus the UUA? And similarly with the customer and constituent inquiries. So.
We might have to look into this and get back to you.
Yeah, not a problem at all. But it goes towards that budget problem solving we're after. I'm just trying to understand.
Right.
Our service model, we've chosen to burden you. And how do we potentially distinguish? That's all.
We can look into that and get that back to you.
So what you're also saying is that code compliance costs about $325,000.
That's the subsidy that we receive.
Yeah, the costs. Yeah, the costs can vary significantly from year to year depending on the level of activity, but we do receive a fixed subsidy of 325,000 per year.
That's general fund.
It yeah, it's a combination of of true general fund property tax revenues and video lottery.
But is that specifically earmarked for that? Or are you getting just a general fund subsidy and you're allocating a portion of that to that? Does that make sense? I mean, are you just getting X number of dollars from the general fund? Part of those here and part of those there? Or is that specifically for that area?
There's a variety. In some cases, it's earmarked in our budget and yeah, it's a whole mix.
Yeah, I would probably need to confirm, but my understanding is we received the subsidy and we apply it toward our code compliance costs. And in some years, the code compliance costs may be below that amount. In some cases, they may be above that amount, but it's a it's a fixed transfer that comes into the fund.
So moving on to building services and our snapshot of that work group. So our building services team provides building services support to urban unincorporated Washington County and rural Washington County. In addition to, we have intergovernmental agreements with the cities of Banks, Gaston and North Plains to provide building services for them as well. Those cities are too small to support their own building services departments. We also provide through agreement electrical inspections to the city of Sherwood. Again, not quite large enough to have a full complement of building inspectors. And so they contract with us for that work. All of the services and within building services are 100% fee supported. They review plans, issue permits and inspect building, construction and grading activities. They issue about 12,000 permits each year, and we conduct 60 to 70,000 inspections, which is about 200 a day. And so our inspectors are really busy out there providing a valuable community service. Our fiscal year 22 to 23 budgeted FTE is 54.02 and our current FTE is 43.06. So we're understaffed in this work group right now for the amount of work that they do.
Is that means a lot of overtime or what happens?
Yes, sometimes overtime happens. Our building services permit technician team, in particular, when we were dealing with our significant backlog over the summer, we're logging significant amounts of overtime to be able to do that.
I don't do a lot on too much. What does that mean significant? I mean, are these folks instead of working 40 or they working 50, 60 hours a week?
That's exactly what it was looking like for a little while.
For how long?
That went about through the summer. I'd have to look into it a little bit more to see exactly how those hours landed, but it was a several weeks worth of significant overtime for that team.
But it was time certain in relationship to working down the backlog, correct?
We were trying to work down the backlog. Exactly. So
Vacations. That wasn't said.
And vacancies, right. We were in the process of filling three vacancies as well. And so we were able to fill those vacancies and bring staff on board and catch up with the backlog. We've now gone back to regular work hours for that team. So inspectors may be doing some overtime or need to be doing some overtime now. It sort of depends on ebbing and flowing of the workload. So the other implication of the understaffing for the teams, though, is that we are generally slower in responding to constituent requests than we would like to be. We also have significant backlog work sometimes, like what happened with the permits over the summer. The problem statement overall here is that current planning and building services operate on a cost recovery model and our costs are exceeding our revenues. Really similar to the last presentation that we saw this afternoon. Our fee increases are not keeping pace with our cost increases. Additionally, we're seeing different development types and the types of development that we're seeing now are generally smaller projects and they pay lower fees. So while we still have large amount of development activity, it's generating less revenue for us. So the impacts of that reduced staffing, we've spent down our revenues. Our staff are overloaded, sometimes working a lot of overtime and our service levels have declined, which I know all of you hear about from our community.
If I could opine at this juncture, we we tried different techniques for one time. Qualified as that. But we can't, in my opinion, we can't sustain in the long term, the use of those techniques. So we can't continue to have inadequate service levels. We can't continue to have overworked staff. And so it's gotten to the point where we're going to have to ensure that the cost coverage is there. We can't take it out of people's hide is one way I tend to generalize it. Nor can we take it out of wait and see how, you know, let service levels ebb and flow. Because then we deal with customer satisfaction problems from, for example, our contract cities. But that's just an opinion at this point. But to me, seeing seeing those impacts is what that's what that tells me.
So the next two slides are graphic representations of what our funds have been looking like. And so what you see in the bars here is our fund balance that we've been maintaining. So our bank account essentially for current planning. And then the lines are, the red line is our minimum fund balance target, which in this case is 75% of our revenue. So you can see the red line tracks that blue line because it's 75% of it. Oh, expenditures, sorry. The blue line is expenditures. Those two track. And then the orange line in here is our revenues. And so what you can see on this is that difference between the expenditures and the revenues. The other takeaway from this is you can really see the ebb and the flow of building activity in Washington County. And we know that it's cyclical, right? There are times when you have a lot of activity, then there are times when there's little activity. What's different looking forward, though, is that these ebbs and flows can track with some of our generally large development areas or large development projects. So the most recent crest that we're seeing here in the gray bar, North Bethany, Bonnie Slope West and Nike are probably responsible for a lot of the additional activity that we had seen. Looking forward, we don't have another North Bethany. We don't have another Bonnie Slope West. And so that gray bar looking into the future is probably going to be different than what we've seen in the past. And then similar building services, since once the land's developed, people start going vertical and building things on it. And so you can see the same kind of cyclical function there in the gray bar. Now, building services fund balance target is one year rather than 75% or nine months. And so that's why on this chart, the blue line expenditures and the red line minimum fund balance are the same. And you can see the orange line in there with our revenues. And so again, you're seeing our revenues are below the expenditures for building services.
Did you have a question? Maybe you said it in my head. I'm trying to reconcile what you said to this question I have. The ending fund balance, the gray 2021, a little lower than 2021 and 2022. 21 and 22 is lower than 20 21. So what happened? How do you what? What did you guys spend on? The what? Did you utilize it to balance the expenditure or like what happened?
Exactly. Yeah, we've been using what's in our fund to make up for the gap between our revenues and our expenditures. So that's why you're seeing those fund balances decrease over the last number of years.
In my head, I was thinking, did you overspend? Then or but it sounds like you didn't. But you had actual expenditures.
Like the reserves into action.
Exactly. We've been using our reserves.
We spent down the reserves. So there were these big development areas. Right? We don't have too many campuses in urban unincorporated Washington County that have the level of construction that the Nike campus did when they reworked their world headquarters. We don't have any more greenfield UUA areas through UGB expansions. So no more North Bethany's, no more Bonnie slopes. So we don't expect any more cyclical ups to contribute towards that fund. So the the level of activity will probably be lower, but it certainly won't include those trying to use the right word, those more meaningful large commercial or large scale development.
Projects.
The big projects. There you go.
Most of the big projects will happen in cities, not in unincorporated Washington County. That being said, we'll still have, I think, a large amount of development activity happening in unincorporated Washington County. It's just going to be smaller scale. Every time somebody remodels their kitchen or gets a new water heater, they still come to us for a permit.
Or middle housing.
Yes, and middle housing is another. It's a little bit of a, I don't know, an unknown. We're expecting to get quite a bit of middle housing. We have a lot of capacity for it. It could happen. But each of those middle housing applications are going to be challenging for us to process because they're all unique. It's a special lot with a very particular configuration, and we're going to help builders figure out how to add middle housing to that lot. It's different from doing a 60 or 80 unit greenfield flat family development. That's where a lot of jurisdictions generate quite a bit of revenue.
And and I would just add, Commissioner, I think to to your point about the relatively big spin down, a significant portion of that actually has been due to technology upgrades. So we completely re placed our permitting software system. And we've also upgraded some of our other technology systems that we use in the building and and current planning areas, mostly in building. And so some of that was actually planned expenditures. We had been saving up, if you will, because we knew we had some big technology expenditures coming. So some of that spin down has been related to those technology expenditures.
And 2016 and 17, those years, look like the revenue is pretty high. I lived the same area I lived during that time, but right now I see a lot of a housing boom, especially Ridge Crossing and 209th area. What was? Do you know any his you offer any historical context around the revenue increase at that time versus now?
That revenue increase was North Bethany, Bonnie Slope West and
and Nike.
Possibly Nike. Yeah, it's those big development areas. So what you're seeing happening in Reeves Crossing, that money is going to Hillsborough because that's a Hillsborough development area. Thank you. So this slide, and then we'll be moving into hearing from our consultant, is talking about what we've done to date in trying to resolve this problem with our internal tools available to us. So in fiscal year 2021, the board didn't did approve a 5% fee increase, which we implemented in two stages, two and a half percent in June and two and a half percent in January of 21. We did implement a voluntary separation package in early 2021 and three employees opted in. At that time, we were in a slightly different situation where we thought we were overstaffed, and so that was the solution. At this time, we're no longer overstaffed. We're now looking at being understaffed. We have been holding on filling vacant positions because we want to make sure that we have enough funding to be able to pay those positions, and we're trying to right size for the amount of work we have in the service levels. So we've been filling. Oh, go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt you, but I'm not sure I followed the second bullet point.
Could you read?
The voluntary separation program. It's essentially an employee buyout where if we have people who are interested in possibly leaving the county, oftentimes it's people close to retirement. Anyway, we offer them some amount of money to be able to retire a little bit early.
Kind of an early buyout, if you will. So people may accept a lump sum of cash in exchange for voluntarily leaving their employment.
And right now, you're saying the composition of the staff existence doesn't not there's no way to entertain that same scenario.
We probably need to add more staff, not have staff leave. And so, yes, we are, I think, operating pretty close to minimum staffing, right?
Anyone close to retiring?
We have a lot of staff close to retirement, and that's terrifying because when they leave, we're going to need to refill those positions.
And there's only one year of per if I have my dates right, there's only one year of PERS higher back left per that bill.
The SB 1049.
It was five years.
A little over a year.
Yep.
Yeah.
Who knows what the legislature will do?
And they could extend it. Yep. I haven't heard that there is such a bill filed yet, but hello, gutting stuff.
3,000 bills.
Yeah, and and maybe that's a good point while we're on that topic is that succession planning is always something that is on our minds. And so as Erin mentioned, we do have a number of employees who are either retirement eligible or will be soon because we have been holding a lot of positions vacant. We haven't really been bringing in a lot of new team members that would be the folks that you anticipate would continue on as some of those other more senior folks retire. So that is something that we're also trying to be mindful of is the need to get people in and get trained by some of those more tenured and and advanced employees before they do take that experience with them.
So we've also done what we can with our internal budgets, so revising our internal cost allocations, reducing travel and training budgets, reducing our fleet operating costs. So then in this fiscal year 2223, the board did approve a 10% current planning fee increase and a 15% building services increase. So we've reached what we think are the limits of what we can do internally. And so, again, this came up at the end of your last presentation. Sometimes you consult outside experts to bring in new perspectives for you and make sure you've evaluated everything available to you. So we contracted with Synergy Resources in order to do an independent assessment of these two work groups. And the goal of this work is to support county leadership in developing a sustainable service level and funding model for these two work groups. I do want to share quickly that we have done some outreach on this work so far. We have worked with our partners, the Home Builders Association, and with the Washington County Development Forum to share at a high level what the recommendations of this assessment would be. Comments received at these events. You know, in general, people don't like fee increases, but there's a little bit of an exception here, which is that people do like to get services. And time is money, and particularly when you're dealing with development. When they're delayed or when there's uncertainty in our review timelines, it ends up costing our development community a lot of money. And so they're very supportive of us doing this work and coming up with a sustainable funding source and a service model that works for them. We did hear some concern from an affordable housing developer about increased fees. Of course, regulated affordable housing operates with very complicated funding packages. And so they want certainty there as well. We will be doing some additional outreach with our small cities who we contract with, so North Plains, Banks and Gaston. And then we'll be sharing results of this conversation today back with the HBA and with our next development forum. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Deborah to cover the assessment findings and recommendations.
Thank you, Erin, and thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to share the assessment results with you today. It's been a pleasure working with both work groups and supporting them in what I believe to be some pretty critical work. And I must admit, most of my my presentation is going to be basically confirming what you've just heard. So don't be surprised if it sounds similar. I will try to skip through things that are too much the same of what you've already heard. Go ahead and go to the next slide, Stephen. The assessment goals when we started this project were really to assess the conditions impacting work group, the work groups, budget, staff and operations. And developing a sustainable funding and service model for both work groups is in is my wheelhouse. This is what I do for a living. And so it's a great opportunity to be able to help out on with these two groups. And then, of course, make recommendations to address funding and service level challenges. Next. Synergy, my firm, we analyzed five years of performance, financial performance. We analyze current internal and external conditions, much of what you've heard. We interviewed internal and external stakeholders, external being you folks at the table. Thank you for your participation. Uh, we interviewed internal and external stakeholders, external being you folks at the table. Thank you for your participation. And also, uh, the developers, internal stakeholders were our, were our staff of both, of both work groups. We surveyed jurisdictions and collaborated with staff to develop the service level scenarios that you'll see later in the presentation. Next slide. In the next few slides, I would just say that the current condition is one of the most impactful um, condition uh, for the work groups has been. Uh, al- almost fifty percent uh, drop in project values. It, of course, uh, result of limited large commercial and industrial development, as you've heard. Let's go to the next slide, still a little bit repetitive here. Um, we view your um, fund balances as a reserve. Like a bank account. And as a reserve, as costs have increased, the funds, the fund balance has declined to cover costs. So this is just an illustration that the last five years, current planning has had to draw down two point seven million dollars to cover cost. Cost whereas building services has um, had to draw down ten point seven million. Next slide. These are the snapshot, a snapshot of how these conditions are impacting uh, staff. Uh, we have uh, seen budgeted staff levels that have not been met for over five years. And the actual staff numbers have declined as well. I want you to keep in mind staffing levels fluctuate. So it are uh, six thirty twenty twenty two numbers, uh, current planning had thirteen point five two and building had forty five point two one. Next slide. With this reduction in staffing, it's been challenging for staff to meet local and state requirements, customer service expectations. And just general workload expectations. I consistently heard that morale is low. And after the earlier uh, presentation, I hope, I hope we can find ways to um, help support staff through that transition. Uh, that you're facing in the next few years. But nevertheless, um, the, the low morale I heard, which was really due to resignations, retirements. And hiring challenges, just the gap in experience that was leaving the work groups was going to be hard to fill. Required staff to do more with less, but it's not too different than what a lot of businesses are dealing with right now. When there's funding uncertainty, there's job insecurity and it's very common. Next slide. One of the external factors that I really want to um, uh, put a fine point on is doing business has changed in the last ten years. For example, the design build practice requires more plan review and in addition, development has become much more complex. Customer submittals require more review and communication with applicants. And of course, the implementing of the Estella permitting software did create a steep learning curve. Technology upgrades are going to continue to be a condition that you're going to need to be mindful of. Because it's going to be critical to being able to deliver um, efficient customer service. In addition, every year there are building codes, state mandates and regulatory changes that require process and system changes. These can be very disruptive to workflows in general. I won't compare it to retooling G M. But it is a very difficult process to insert new workflows in existing workflows. All those things really impacted your customer service, your customer service levels uh, over the last several years. Let's move to building services key findings. Just going to show you some quick analysis to support our conclusions. Basically, in this slide, I just want you to see that there's been a decline in revenue that started before the pandemic. And uh, you know, you had a beginning at ten point two in twenty sixteen seventeen, ending in seven point five million. In twenty one, twenty two. Next slide. In this slide, I want you to see uh, the cost, uh, the personal services cost per F T E is what I'd like you to look at. Um. I want to start by sharing that when I'm working with public sectors using enterprise funds or cost recovery models. I like to remind their constituents that the highest cost percentage wise to operate either one will be labor. This is same true for service businesses in the private sector. It's the same for current planning and building services. Takes a high percentage of staff labor to deliver services. So in this slide, you can see that building services personnel costs overall rose five percent per year. However, when you include overhead, the average cost for F T E rose to seven point four percent per year. This is fascinating to see how some of these numbers were very similar to your finance uh, directors. Next slide. In our analysis, we learned that fees had not kept up with inflation. So we ran a scenario and it was intended to answer this question. If building services had been. Cola alone, beguiled, beginning in twenty sixteen seventeen, what would the result be? I want you to keep in mind this is cola only. The result was would be one point one million more dollars in revenue. Than they have today. It's that compounding effect, just like adding interest to your uh, savings account. Next slide. This graph shows that the personnel cost per F T E compared to revenue per transaction. This analysis shows that the average per revenue, uh, revenue per transaction has declined by nearly half. Which is due to the valuation of those projects that I mentioned earlier. As a result, your customer service levels have declined due to those reduced staffing levels. I'm going to pause there before I go to about current planning. Are there any, any questions? All right.
Not seeing any.
Okay, current planning. In this graph, we're showing that activity is estimated in twenty one, twenty two. To be fifty seven hundred transactions per F T E. That's per F T E on actual revenue. This highlights how seriously low staffing is today for current planning. When you compare this to five years ago, uh, when, when uh, current planning had sixteen staff and they were handling fifty eight hundred. So there's a, this really illustrated it for us when we were doing our analysis. Next slide. We looked at current planning the same way we did um, uh, building services. We wanted to see. So if they had increased fees on a regular basis, what would that look like? And the answer is they would have two hundred and sixty one thousand dollars more in revenue than it does today. With both of these examples, I want you to keep in mind this is cola only because there are indirect costs. Uh, that also increase every year over time. Next slide. So S R G has recommended the county build a sustainable funding model to support desired service levels. And I felt it was important to provide you best practices for enterprise cost recovery models, but you folks, of course, already know these, so I won't belabor them. Uh, because I spoke to the Government Finance Officers Association as well and um. You'll see that our recommendations um, really are consistent with those best practices. For example. S R G recommends increasing fees to keep up with annual costs. It creates stability for the worker and the customer. We are also recommending that the county adopt a policy setting a target amount of working capital reserve in each enterprise fund. And we're also recommending the county maintain a minimum reserve in those enterprise funds, which can also help to mitigate current and future risks. Next slide. Sure you're all familiar with inflationary indices, but I'd just like to highlight a few. Uh, these are typically used to increase revenue, fees, wages, as you know. The Bureau of Labor Statistics publishes a labor index, which shows the increase in wages by geographic regions, which I really like. They also publish consumer pricing uh, index, which it shows the increase in household goods and services, which is for me the distinction. Personnel Services Cost Index is some, it's, it uses a three-year rolling average of personnel costs, which are wages, benefits and taxes. Which is at a minimum what S R G is recommending uh, the county use, the P C I. To ensure personnel costs are covered on a annual basis. Next slide.
Excuse me, did you go over the construction cost index?
Do you like me to? I can.
Yes, please.
Many of uh, many of your larger construction firms publish their costs and um, have. Construction cost index out there. We, we reference Mortensen's, um, who has. Locations geographically around the country. And so he has for the Portland metro area a construction cost index. And it shows us how much the cost of construction have increased year over year. And um, it, it really ties nicely to the work you do. Um. But we were, we were looking at just covering your personnel costs.
And on the personnel cost index source, S R G analysis. Uh, okay, it's your analysis, but based off of whose personnel cost data?
Uh, yours, uh.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, uh, the work groups, uh, um, yes, both work groups. Thank you, Chair Harrington.
Okay, so, so in essence, this is telling me that Mortensen's information, I assume is. Uh. Company specific information for them, you just happen to have access to it or. Access to publicly available contracts that they have serviced?
They publish it, they publish it publicly. Um, it is, it, they make it uh, very well, uh, ma- make it accessible to anyone. Um. But there are two jurisdictions, Lake Oswego and um, Tiger, uh, Tiger. Tiger, yes, Tiger and Lake Oswego that use the Seattle con- construction index.
Okay.
Raise their fees.
Okay.
But Seattle, to me, is a different market. Um, if we're going to use a construction costume decks, my recommendation would be to use a local market.
Okay.
And the, and I think the, the Mortensen index that Deborah is referring to, that is the Portland index, is that correct?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next slide. When, when ser- uh, when surveying the jurisdictions, we asked them about their building services and current planning. And their response about how they operate or what their model looks like are, are exactly the same as Washington County. They identified building services as an enterprise fund or a full cost recovery fund. But most view current planning as a fee-based model with a percentage of general fund revenue. Or an outside revenue source used to fill the gap. The other thing we heard from uh, jurisdictions was how much concern they have over. Their jurisdiction's periodic fee increases versus a sustainable funding model. And of course, when they found out what you folks were doing, they were very curious and um, uh, thought it was. That we were, you were looking for a sustainable funding model and they were really very interested in it. The next three slides are uh, fee comparisons. Uh, we use three projects to compare Washington County fees with seven jurisdictions. And from these comparisons, you're going to see, um, this one's a residential. Uh, you're going to see overall that we can see increasing Washington County's fees would closely align with many of their peers. Okay? Residential building permits, five jurisdictions are higher than Washington County. Next slide. Green is Washington County and blue, of course, are the rest of the jurisdictions. Commercial building permits, there are four that are higher than Washington County. And now, next slide. I'm just kind of pausing here so you can look at them. Um, the ten lot subdivision with one street is stars indicate, um. The stars indicate agencies that are attempting a high level of cost recovery. So that's Washington County, Gresham, Multnomah County and Beaverton. Versus those jurisdictions that subsidize the development review function with general fund or other resources. And there's more of that in the spreadsheet that came with the report, if you're interested. Next slide. So a major part of this work was to work with staff to develop service levels and we did just that. And uh, they really worked very hard at um, analyzing and uh, developing these service levels. We have two examples to share today and the rest can be found in the report. First, S R G believes that service levels are one of the best tools to determine budgets, staffing and techniques. Because if your expectation is a high customer service level, there's a cost associated with that. If you're okay with a medium level service level, then you can adjust your budget and adjust your staffing. To meet that service level need. So they really are, they really can be a good tool if you choose to um, use them. These service levels have been developed based on turnaround time and staffing needs, timelines and building codes. Because what we heard time and time again was how long things were taking and how important it was to get these thing, these uh, permits and. Uh, land reviews uh, through the process quicker. Please keep in mind that the turnaround times are uh, estimates. Next slide. So let's look, review the building services service levels. And I'm going to go row by row. So the first row in the chart. Those are the staff levels for residential permits. And they range from low at thirty six F T E to high or desired at sixty five F T E. Row two shows us the time to complete the premise, permit process, ranging from desired, which is only thirty days. To a hundred and forty days at the lower level. Budget level, if, if, if adopted, the budget level reduces the timelines for tasks such as. Setting up pre-screen applications, plan review, final check and issuing the permit by approximately sixty five days. Below service level. The reason I'm highlighting the front end and the front end, the intake end of the permitting process and the closing up of the permitting process. Is if we've often finding workflows that if we can make those two ends more efficiently. The rest of the workflow moves much smoother. So keep that in mind when you're thinking about the service levels, intake and close up. Customers can expect at the budget level approximately forty five to fifty five business days to complete the process. Row three is the forecasted costs to fund those budget levels, those F T E levels. The budget to forecast the level of revenue required to reach scenario and keep in mind a forecast is not certain. It's an estimate, it's a forecast. S R G's recommendation is to fully fund the budget service level and to restore the building services group to fifty four F T E. Keep in mind, F T E fluctuates, but on August fifteenth, twenty twenty two, for example, building services was down to thirty six F T E. The last row, excuse me, the la- second to last row, the fourth row, this is the revenue that's going to be needed. It's projected again. To fully fund that budgeted service level and that would be three point four, three point five million dollars. So a fee increase will definitely be necessary. Um. To be able to generate that increased income. I'd like to pause for any questions from anyone? You answered them all, Erin. Good job.
No, I have a question, sorry. So you talked about the trend uh, over time in slides ten and eleven. For the financial history. And what I'm trying to get my head around for building services is since we know. There aren't going to be any more big U U A projects. Um. I'm trying to get my head around the anticipated. Service level. Um, so it's not based off of revenues, but rather trying to imagine demand. So, um, that's where if I use as a proxy, the gray lines. On like for building services, slide eleven. Uh. I think what would help my brain is a assumption of what. The anticipated service level demand would be. Um, because I, I understand this chart, but I want to make sure that if we target. The desired six, the yellow. One, for example. one, for example, will that meet that service level demand? Or will it still? I don't want to fund inadequacy. That's my concern.
So those are the scenarios we're working on right now that we would intend to bring back to you in the future as we'd be looking at based on what we've observed, based on what we expect is reasonably likely to occur in the next few years, what level of staffing we need in order to meet that timeline that Deborah is showing there.
I have no problem with, no matter what we, uh, target or assume as a service level, that it is, it has a high, uh, chance of being incorrect, right? That's all it is, is a target. I'm not, I'm not tied up on that. But rather, I just need to better understand that target and thank you.
Thank you. Chair, thank you for your question.
I have a que- quick question, Deborah.
Yes, no.
I'm trying to, and I'm looking at you, Stephen and Erin in the room. By the way, Deborah, great presentation so far. A lot of information, but good information you're sharing, we're tracking it. I'm trying to understand, um, the permit, residential permit fee and commercial fee between the difference of, uh, Hellsborough and City of Beaverton. Seems like a pretty drastic difference between the two cities. What is some information that you could offer to us that if constituents ask us? How do we answer those two, you know, that question? Because the, the slide on slide thirty-two and slide thirty-three are, there's a huge gap.
Every jurisdiction is a little bit different, I think, would be the answer to that. Um, they all have a complex mix of fund sources that they use. Sometimes they are subsidizing from other funding sources that may or not be something the county would be willing to do. Um, they also could be seeing a very large amount of one type of development that generates a lot of money and therefore other types of development pay less in fees. So it, it's really pretty complex. It's difficult to compare jurisdictions to each other for that reason.
It really is, but thank you for the question and thank you, Erin, for the, for the very thorough answer. We found it very difficult to compare jurisdiction to jurisdiction. I mean, they, their, their org- their structures are different, their fee structures are, yes, it's, um, there are no two alike. It's not an apples-to-apples comparison.
If they're not collecting the revenue through fees, they're subsidizing it.
Yes. Right. And, and just to put a fine point, a little bit more on the service level, this was, these service levels were generated, uh, their, the goal of these service levels was to meet service demand, demands. So if, if we want, as I mentioned earlier, if we want high level of service, this is what it, this is what it would look like, giving this, and this is a scenario, it's, it's forecasting. Um, and as Erin said, they're going to work further on this very topic. So I'm gonna move on to current planning if you'd like. All right. So type two, uh, development. It's a land use review. And as you can see, in row one, the numbers of FTE begin at ten and their desired level on the other end is twenty-one. And those, uh, same thing. Time needed to complete the entire application ranges from seventy to eighty days for the desired service level to a hundred and sixty to a hundred and seventy days. Budget level eliminates the service level impacts associated with the loan current service levels. And SRG is recommending the budget service level for current planning as well. Customers can expect at the budget level approximately a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty business days to complete the majority of land use reviews. The forecasting cost, which you can see in the, um, in the slide, that's the level of revenue required for each scenario. And I would just wrap up this one with row four as the projected increase in revenue that current planning would need for the budget service level is one point oh four six. And as I said about building, they would need a fee increase as well.
And Deborah, I think the chair has a question.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, I'm I'm turning up my nose a little bit, uh, because I'm having a hard time imagining any business that really wants to say, oh yeah, I'm okay with it taking me two to three months to process my applications. So if I heard you correctly, you're recommending the budget level, the one in grayish.
Yes.
Whereas I'm trending more towards the yellowish because it's the, the least amount of delay. So, uh, help me understand how an up to eighty day is still palatable for?
Um, and, and maybe I'll just jump in. I think the, so for the land use reviews, statutorily, we typically need a hundred and twenty days is our maximum turnaround time for most what we call type two or type three development applications. And the, the numbers that you see up here are, are inclusive of a, an additional thirty-day completeness review period.
Okay.
So for instance, in the current slide, the one hundred and fifty days is thirty days of completeness review plus a hundred and fifty days of actual application review, which at, at the current level, we are barely meeting that statutory minimum obligation.
Yeah.
So if we were to go to the budget service level, then we're saying it's really a hundred and twenty days of that, or rather, a hundred, a hundred days of application review and probably thirty days of completeness review. And, and those turnaround times are not inconsistent, certainly with other jurisdictions. So I think, I think being at the budget service level would put us sort of within the range of expectation of our customers. And the current level of service that hasn't honestly changed a whole lot. I've, I've, uh, when I first started at the county fifteen years ago, I was in current planning and we were always struggling to meet those statutory deadlines then with a lot more staff. And we find ourselves kind of, you know, hitting that target, uh, barely, um, on a consistent basis right now with a significantly lower staffing level.
And on the building services one, I forgot to write down for myself that SRG recommendation was that budget or desired?
Budget.
Oh boy. Now, the other thing I'm trying to get my head around, and I tried looking at the document. Over sixty percent of staff time is spent working on non-revenue generated activities. Is this because of things like, uh, what the current state requirements are? The building code, so you can't identify with time to understand the latest and greatest requirements, whether they're from the state or metro or somebody else. To, you can't tie that time necessarily to one specific application. You have to paint it across the pool of applications.
Yeah, and that, and that statistic, the, the sixty percent is really specific to current planning. And so some of the things they do include floodplain management, that's a function that we are not recouping costs for. They do a lot of just casual inquiries. I own this property, what could I do with it? I'm thinking about buying that property, what can I do with it? So they deal with a lot of, of, um, sort of day-to-day things that uh, are likely not to ever come back in the form of a paying application, but they're customer services that jurisdictions typically provide.
So is this telling me that we're recovering those costs through the fees? Right, okay. Got it, got it. Okay.
But yes, there are things like trainings and other, other background work that also needs to happen just to sort of keep us current with requirements, et cetera. Yes.
So, okay, I won't slow us down. Today's not a decision day, but I get it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for the question. So slide thirty-eight, we'll move on. So just to wrap up, building services, either current or budget service levels are going to need the following. They're gonna need to increase staff and fees, upgrade technology on an ongoing basis, perform a deeper analysis of workflows. Whereas current planning, they need the same three, uh, things. But current planning is also gonna need, uh, to be subsidized from an external funding source to be able to cover the sixty percent of work or at least contribute to the sixty percent of the time they spend is unable to be, uh, fee-generated. So next slide, Stephen or Erin? So recommendations. These are the primary, like, internal staff activities to conduct an analysis to identify and implement additional opportunities to streamline processes and improve technology. And I believe they've already started a work group or are working on towards that as we speak. Um, increase staffing in both groups to budgeted staffing levels and maintain an adequate fund balance to mitigate fluctuations in development activity. Next slide. These are, you know, the policy issues that the board, um, will, will their support, your support would be needed. And they include, um, I think what I want to also mention is staff had shared with me that they do not anticipate general fund revenue being a possibility for current planning in twenty-three, twenty-four. And of course, I had the benefit of hearing your finance director's, uh, presentation earlier. So, uh, I'm glad I got the heads up. Therefore, staff is focusing on achieving, um, cost recovery, uh, truly. But the, the, uh, the recommendations that I made some time ago or to increase revenue to, to sustain budget staffing levels, um, I like to see it, you implement a one-time fee increase just to close the gaps between the actual cost increases and revenues. Uh, implement a policy to adjust fees annually to address those increasing costs. That's where we talked about the, uh, PCI, the Personnel Cost Index. And then to implement a five percent technology fee on permits and applications to fund ongoing technological updates. And other jurisdictions are using this method to help offset costs to keep their technology updated. And so there's a, there's enough that are already doing it, in my opinion, um, that it makes it a little more palatable for folks um, that are building or are working with those jurisdictions around the, the area. Consider an ongoing external funding, uh, subsidy for current planning to fund services not related to fee generating activities. And like I said, I understand that can't happen this year. But it is, th- that time that's spent is really valuable to the developer and really valuable to the individuals in our community. So I hope at some point, um, they'll be able to be subsidized for that time spent. And, um, I think that's all, Stephen. We've come to the end. Thank you very much for your attention.
So we do have some next steps outlined on this slide, which are, I know we gave you a lot of information today and you probably have questions for more information you'd like to see. The good news is we're working on putting that information together and we anticipate coming back to you in early January with some of these more refined cost estimates for what the fee increases could look like in order to reach those, um, budgeted service levels. So we'll be developing a proposal for that that would include increasing fees for the catch-up as Deborah covered, implementing the annual fee indexing and then implementing the technology fee. And we will also be working on continuing our internal process improvements as much as possible. We think we can make some improvements on the margin there, but it's not going to be enough. We still need to really look at these fee increases as well. And then back to our policy questions. So do you have any questions about the information we've covered today? And does your board support staff moving forward with, um, next steps to achieve our cost recovery goals?
Commissioners? I just want to say thank you for the presentation. I, I know that this has been a long time in the works and I, I know you've been, you've been working through this and I want to, uh, say thank you to Deborah as well for her presentation. It was, you, you took a very complex issue and broke it down so that I can understand it. And I, I really, I, I do appreciate that and I appreciate the, uh, contrast to other areas, even though we can't directly make those comparisons. So, um, I don't have any, uh, questions about the assessment. I'm, I'm comfortable with the staff moving forward on looking at how do we achieve those cost recovery goals? And I would be in favor of an escalator over time that would be, uh, you know, uh, something like a COLA type of process so that we don't get into this situation in the future again. Other commissioners?
This has been an accountant's delightful meeting today, all day long. Terry and I have just been, they don't get an opportunity. Couple of, three things, uh, one, uh, is, uh, there's two ways to han- in any business, there's two ways to handle problems. Increases in revenue, decreases in cost. We, we know that. I mean, that's just basic economics. Uh, we're talking about the revenue side purely. Uh, and let me ask one revenue question and then I'll ask it in a minute. And then one cost question. On the revenue side, I don't know what, I'm hearing the sixty percent number, uh, for a certain task. I don't know what kind of general fund subsidy that look that is. And you heard Greg Mon earlier talking about these, these, um, these transfers. I'm not opposed to that because I, I really don't believe that the last guy on the bus, guy or gal, I call everybody guys, uh, should pay for the bus just simply because of the last one on. What I mean by that, that there are functions that we as taxpayers should be paying for, but I, I don't know what that number is. So it'd be interesting to, to have an understanding of what that would be because additional sum that would be transferred to you. Secondly, question or observation. For a long time, this goes back to about eighty-five, eighty-six, uh, we, we have chatted about in our strategic plan, the, uh, benefit of cities, uh, operating, uh, in more parts of the county. And in your slides at the beginning, you kept saying, well, these are the areas that we'll take care of until that happens. It's never going to happen, uh, you know, if there isn't some impetus for that to occur. About, yeah, my memory's getting a little foggy, but maybe seven, eight, nine, ten years ago, we tried an experiment with the city of Tiger where we said, why don't you do some permitting? You take the fees, uh, and we could do that with Beaverton, that was a question asked on, on their fee base. In certain areas, it's which in their areas of aspiration, which they're gonna supposedly annex one of these days. But I don't see that model as being suggested and I, I just, I'm curious why we're replicating. Everybody's doing their own little thing. It's like having a bunch of clubs and everybody's replicating the same administrative staff, the same, this same act. And I understand for the unincorporated, we have to, that's us. But for the urban and unincorporated, is there any, and I'm not saying overnight, but is there any thought on how we might look at cutting costs? Sometimes it's transference of, of, of those staff members to the cities by saying, gee, we're on this side of the street, you're doing it on this side of the street, we're doing it. Is there some way that we can use the same staff? Maybe we can pay you or you can charge your fees, whatever that would be, for you to do the permitting applications. Is that, I, I didn't hear that in the presentation. I've not heard that observation. Is that some forward thought or is that a never thought or that's the question?
I, I think Commissioner, that is a, an opportunity, a way to do business. I, I think it, it would be somewhat challenging here, just given the broad geography and the sheer number of, of people that we're serving in those urban unincorporated areas currently. Multnomah County did a similar thing with the cities of Portland and Gresham. So, um, they've got about fifteen thousand people, I think, in, in urban unincorporated areas. And those permitting functions are handled by the cities depending on their geographies. So I think a model like that, uh, is not outside the realm of possibility here in Washington County, but it would be a pretty, pretty heavy lift for some of the jurisdictions to try to take on, uh, that much of an expansion. But, um, it, it isn't out of the question. I think if cities were to provide services in unincorporated areas, they will insist on a hundred percent cost recovery. And so the permitting fees for the end users may actually even be higher than what we might be proposing. Just depending on, again, lots of differences between how the jurisdictions function. But I think with our size, I think we do achieve some cost efficiencies. But I think with our size, I think we do achieve some cost efficiencies in that regard. So um it it could be a longer-term strategy, and I think um it it could warrant some further discussion. I think our our intent today was really to focus on sort of the the present issue and how do we address this challenge that we're dealing with now. Um and then if if there's a desire on the board's part to investigate other options, then that's a longer-term task that we can.
I I don't want to dwell on this, but I I I understand the short term. But part of your analysis was, well, where are we going to go in the future? And part of the recommendation, the consultant is less increased every year. There are areas, and I'm not suggesting everywhere, but you don't live far from me, and Marnie, you don't live far from me. And I'm in an unincorporated area, and I think, or you're in an unincorporated area, and you're in this city, right? Yeah, so it's all, so there are areas that are not that hard to service. And I have heard from Hillsborough, uh both north and south, they could probably do a bit more, but they won't full-cost recover. Beaverton, I haven't asked the current mayor, uh but. I know Farnor One was looking at that that at what they might do around their city, because, I mean. These boundaries are official. If if we didn't, I mean, we know, but people don't know when they're coming in and out. So I I'll stop, but I just think it seems like, are we just solving a Band-Aid approach for a deep wound? Are we going to some point, look at these these issues? So that's that's my point.
And I think it's probably yes and, because we still need to achieve the cost recovery for these work groups in the long term. As you said, we do have these areas that will always be unincorporated Washington County. But we could also work towards some kind of an agreement for those other areas. It's just a longer-term part of looking at this.
Other commissioners?
Um. I think my question, Erin and Stephen and Deborah is, I'm wondering. Like answering your policy questions, and I think my question is requesting more information. And that information is trying to plug in to for, you know, housing. And this dilemma that exists between supply and demand and how this fee structure fit in. And I think I'll be also interested in the feedback from developers. Of this fee structure that we're proposing, and if. I wonder the, you know, like forty-nine and a forty-two percent increase, the suggested budget. Uh so that we're talking about eighty-nine percent increase, that if you add the two total.
Uh no, I think the the fees would increase perhaps in the forty percent range for each work group.
For each work group.
And I think that's part of, and again, that's part of the uh internal work that we're doing, sort of building on the recommendations from the assessment. Trying to take those principles and then sort of update our uh assumptions about where things are going in terms of development trends, costs, that sort of thing. And then packaging that up into some potential um the increased scenarios that we can share back with you next month.
Yeah, I think I think I would be interested in informations um and also feedback from what you hear from uh when you do present to the Washington County Development Forum and the HBA groups. And and also, I don't know if, looking at Marnie right now, um I don't know if the there was a group that existed when we were. Putting together the supportive housing implementation plan. I think that group no longer exists, but what? Because the, you know, the the solution to homelessness is affordable is housing, and the supportive housing. Services is about creating that permanent housing. So I wonder, how do we, i- is there another group to ask the fee structure? That isn't development or developer focused, but also developer and developer, but also tied to the social determinants of well-being.
So I don't know. Majority of the affordable housing is being built in cities. Uh the number of affordable housing complexes of the seven currently under development, three of them are in urban and incorporated Washington County. And in the majority of the cities, they've either waived or subsidized their um development fees for affordable housing.
I think I'm just talking about Washington County areas.
Yes, the point I'm trying to make is.
The guy followed you.
That group for supportive housing was countywide. And these fees are only applicable in the UUAs.
And the rural area.
And the rural.
So you're saying. But affordable housing bond measure can't be spent for rural, right? Right, which is why I represented that the majority of the affordable housing projects in that bond program are happening in cities.
So I still, I don't think I still follow you, Charlie. And are you saying that group is countywide? Uh so they're they're, they couldn't be asked?
The SHS group is countywide for the county services, which is different than the affordable housing bond, which development fees apply to.
All right, so just to clarify a little bit. I I provided that example, not saying ask that a specific group, but there were a lot of developer development-focused group. Individuals in that committee that could, should be tapped to, that are more focused on um societal issues. Not that developers aren't focused on that, but I'm saying like more focused on the social determinants of health and addressing specific areas around that. So um I I I'm just trying to figure out who else could we ask and incorporate?
Right.
Um that aren't the typical u-usual players, the usual suspect.
Comment. My. Do I understand that the developers are also asking you and and to do this work so that they can get through the process more quickly?
Yes, they are very supportive of this work for that reason.
Just want to put that into the equation too, that I I don't know that there's uh. It's not that they're not sensitive to cost, but they're they're also sensitive to the cost of the time, cost of money. So so if you can get it done now, and that's part of the, I think your concern was around uh. Was this forty-fifty, close to fifty percent jump sticker shock for developers?
Uh the developers I've been purviewed to have conversations with, I think, Erin, Stephen, you both heard, were more concerned about streamlining our own process, not increasing fee structures.
Right. Right, and it's a, it's a multi-pronged approach. You can't, you can't, yeah, we're not going to look at our customers and just say, give us more money. We to ensure that we're doing our best to streamline and then and and uh make our processes as efficient as we can. And then, but but that alone obviously isn't the solution, so it's it's needing to, we need to travel both paths at the same time, essentially.
Right, yeah, no, yeah, I think to Commissioner Trace's point, I I I do think they do understand it's a necessary evil, increasing the fee. Uh I'm not sure about this high, but it's a, it's worth conversation to have.
Right.
Good job.
Yeah, and and we're always, of course, we're trying to be sensitive both to price and turn around and service, right? I mean, like any business, that's that's the the magic balance that we're looking to achieve, how to how to best balance those things. So we're certainly mindful of of both of those issues. Um and maybe back to the affordability question, I think, uh maybe, you know, what the chair might have been alluding to is that, you know, in some jurisdictions, they've they've made policy decisions to help subsidize affordable housing developments. So there's a cost of of us providing a service in a full-cost recovery model. There's an inherent tension there between affordability and the need to recoup those costs. Um but as a a number of cities have have made policy decisions and or the supportive housing and the affordable housing bond measure are providing funding that help pay for those services that are needed in order to actually review and issue the building permits and make those projects happen.
Once upon a time, I don't want to dwell on this, because we get another matter. Absent asking our city partners to to play a role, talked about that earlier. We actually went to the private sector and contracted work. The problem that we had, there's a problem, but claim we had is. We we had two structures going on. You want to come through the county, it's a little delay. So we weren't going to high rates. If you want to go through and pay these extra fees, you can get really expedited, because we were using outside vote. Some people said that's very discriminatory, because if you have the money, you can pay. If you don't, then you got to go through the regular process. I never looked at it that way, simply saying, if if I don't want to go on the fast lane, on the toll lane, I'll go on the free lane. But if I want, you know, the faster I'm willing to pay for, have have we completely ruled out saying there is no. Outside for-profit companies. Who, we could go up to that, whatever sixty-seven percent and say, if you're wanting a faster service, quicker turnaround. We'll just pass those costs on. It doesn't increase our FTE, doesn't include, increase our cost. Because we're passing everything on, so it's, we don't have a big labor shortage that you're talking about. We don't have a lot of issues. Is 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 that unpalatable or not doable? I refresh my memory. And we we did that, it's probably twenty years ago, but we did it, and it worked really well for a while.
There are private sector companies that do some of this work. So that is something that we could investigate to some level. Um there are some challenges with it, though. I'm also not sure it would save money really for anybody, because we would still have contracting and administration fees, and then the end user would probably be paying even more in fees to the private sector. Um than they would if we were processing for them. So but that is something we can do some more research on.
But in his example, someone is willing to pay the price for the faster service.
Right, I, we had thought about um expediting fees, particularly when we're dealing with the permit backlog. One of the other concerns we had, though, is that everyone is going to pay the higher fee, because people needed those permits out of our system so quickly. What do you do when everybody's paying for something to be expedited? Then there's no way to expedite, because we have, it's so congested, yes.
And and yeah, and I think there are some equity concerns, right? So a big developer certainly would be willing to pay more in order to get a faster turnaround time, whereas a um a small residential customer has a need to expand their home to accommodate a a relative. And they're not able to pay that fee, so they wait longer, right? So I think we've historically just tried to do first in, first out, um and just try to ma-maximize the um turnaround for everyone in the system.
I heard those equity questions before, we did twenty years ago. There are projects that choke you just simply because of their size, their complexity, and it's just a thought. I mean, they're, the person who's expanding their home or small project is not that complex. Your your issue is you get to, you got a huge entity, a bunch of entities are coming all at once, you don't have labor. Unless you're going to work your people to death, and I defy you to find people on this market. It's, that's why I I don't, I don't take, you know, consultants, all due respect, I don't take that.
So I might, I think we get the idea, and we have at least two more commissioners who haven't spoken yet.
I agree. I'm tired.
Commissioner Willie, thoughts?
Uh no, there's a lot of information here, and I've just been going back and forth through the slide presentation. I don't think I have a conclusion right now, so I I've heard the dialogue.
Okay, thank you.
I'm good.
So um I have a few points. First is a question on the recommendation for building services, service levels. So I heard the SRG um recommendation for both current planning and for building services is the budget level. Uh but Stephen, you helped me understand the state statute and the of a hundred and twenty days and thirty-day completeness for current planning. Are there timeframe requirements imposed on us for building services?
There are, um depending on the specific activity.
And how does that compare to this SRG recommended budget level?
It doesn't exactly compare to what's on the slide, but I believe that that budget level um gets us to where we need to be, given statutory requirements and time limits on when we have to do certain activities.
Okay, so I'm in full of support that building services needs to operate as an enterprise fund. And I don't know if this budget level gets us to an enterprise fund or not, so that's something to look at. Um I um think it would be helpful if you redistribute the uh HBA letters uh that we've received at least in the last. Three prior budget years around fees. Nobody wants to pay more fees, is the conclusion. Um in the document, uh there was, and I might have read it too quickly. Uh but it seemed to be like there were portions of the document that talked about um some uh. Yes, there's a seller, but there's some also unhappiness or some technology challenges. And I haven't heard that highlighted, other than talking about having a technology fee. So that's something I need a little bit of help on. Um so I'm going to be, I'm playing a little bit of a bad cop here. Counties have a clear rural services role and have a very clear countywide role. So I think we do have to look at this from the standpoint of counties are required to handle the rural. Uh servicing, and so we're going to need to understand that model, so to speak. We currently handle by contract certain cities. They could just as easily uh North Plains, Banks, Gaston are all proximate to Hillsborough, Cornelius Forest Grove. They could contract with those cities as well. That's not my big, my big concern at this point. My biggest concern is that when it comes to subsidizing, what we're talking about are countywide revenues. All SIP, all gain share, all general fund property taxes are countywide revenues. And um I think we have to move forward with not supporting. We we need to move forward with ensuring that more countywide revenues are going to countywide services and not subsidizing the urban unincorporated areas. I would like to see an examination of the UA geographies and engage with Tigard, Beaverton. That do have areas that are ripe and looking at what, asking them to assess what full-cost coverage. Uh current planning and building services work would be for them to do that, and so that we have better information on through some experimentation. Do I think we would necessarily each be able to pull the lever on this experiment this year? Maybe not, but we've got to start somewhere and gather some more information about what that full-cost recovery is. So I think this has been a really helpful analysis and uh uh presentation today. In terms of you're developing a proposed fee schedule, yes, I'm totally in support of the catch-up. Um I'm a little uneasy about the indexing, because the personal co-personnel cost indexing is looking at current costs. And I'm not informed enough right now to know if that uh. There's the indexing by external forces versus indexing based upon the current personnel you have. So I don't want us, I want the team to have a good mix of experience. I'm not saying put a cap on if you have more experience, but what I don't want to have is that us, that we set an index with a team that's newer to this domain. And in five or ten years' time, go, oh, well, they're in the upper end of the range, and now we've got a a different sort of problem. So I'm not quite sure how to approach that one um versus other indices. So but I do believe that there needs to be a different indices than the, what the current model doesn't do. So and also, yes, on the technology fee. Bottom line, we can't get away from the the fact that um in order to provide a service in a more timely manner without. Adverse effects on employees, right? That I I feel wholeheartedly, we have to resolve. We cannot do that any longer. We have to make the hard adjustments. We cannot do that any longer. We have to make the hard adjustments in the fee structures. And thank you for bringing forward the data in order for us to do that. And securing the ex, the external expertise. Thank you. Don't know if you can see my little hand waving. I am grateful for the data.
Yep. Yes, we very much appreciate Deborah's support and assistance on this project. She, she brought a lot of great ideas to us and and on the process improvement side too, and many, many of the recommendations, things that she was gleaning from others and best practices and past experience are things that we are already implementing or have plans to implement. So it's been a really good process all the way around. So I think we've, we've gleaned a lot and, and hope this was helpful to you as well.
I got one final real quick question. Is, th- these are only two of your service departments. Is, is this same exercise going on with others?
These are really our two cost recovery funds. Yep. So we're really focused on trying to help ensure that we can, can balance these funds. And again, as you say, we need to both by necessity and, and probably by policy, you don't want to use general fund monies to subsidize those functions that primarily benefit unincorporated areas. All right. Well, thank you all so much.
Thank you. Okay. We haven't had a break at all and we still have one more topic to do. So commissioners, what would you like to do?
Cancel the next topic.
Do a break.
Take a break.
Ten minutes?
Yeah.
Um, I've got a hard. I have to leave before. Let's introduce it then.
Okay. We'll keep going. We're gonna go.
You're coming back for the night meeting?
Yeah, I'm coming. Yeah. I'm coming back here. I just, I told Catherine earlier, I. I got it.
Thank you for lending.
To buy one and I've been committed, lock it up each Tuesday. We'll bring one in.
I know I need to. I normally don't have a problem.
Well, you will still have, I think, a quorum of three at four. Might come down this way and give them a third money. Well, look who here is still coming to. We're not happy about losing you. We are happy for the state legislature. That's all. Really, genuinely.
Wait, what?
Yeah.
Breaking news. Do we have our power plant? Right.
So sorry to fill folks in, a member of the government relations team has a terrific opportunity for, for a job serving with the state legislature. And we certainly rely upon a really well-working state legislature. So while I'm happy for you and your career opportunity, we have really appreciated having you on the team and the role that you have played. So I want you to know that we're, we're feeling the empty shoes. That's all.
I know, by the way, you owe us. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. I don't know if I need to say for the record right now, but I will do it later. Yeah, it's been a great honor to work here and I regret that I've been called to duty in the Senate President's office. But I really appreciate all of the experiences I've had here and getting to know all the work you do and all the great teammates that you have in the county. So thank you.
Yeah. It's a very rare experience that, that the situation comes up. So please take it as, as good nature. We really are sad for us. I'm sorry, Aaron. You are not alone and thank you for saying it out loud.
So good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Aaron Doyle, your Senior Government Relations Manager. And we will try to be as quick as we possibly can to get through all of this. We know that you have had a very tough afternoon. So.
Don't go too fast.
Yeah.
Meaning that the folks who've had to step away do have the opportunity to dial in, but the recording is available. So.
Yeah. So you have your entire internal GR teams from both Clean Water Services and Washington County here with you today. And they will introduce themselves when they are speaking for the first time. So today we're just three easy, simple little things that we're trying to accomplish. One, going through the state agenda, the proposed state agenda in preparation for your hopeful action next Tuesday at your board meeting. And then similarly going through the two thousand and twenty-three federal agenda. And then a legislative update where we're going to highlight some other hot topics where we are present and accounting for ourselves in those conversations. So basically we have some policy questions for you today. And as we hit these points in, in the presentation, we'll be turning back to, to make sure that we've headed in the right direction. Obviously first, we want to ensure that you guys are prepared to, to have us bring the legislative agendas for your action at the December thirteenth board meeting. Secondly, we have put in some legislative concepts due to the process that is required. It had to start back in September before we could really work it. And we now are making sure that we are moving forward with your approval. On that, we're looking for those thumbs up to make sure that we haven't gone too far afield. And then finally, just as always, what further information needs does the board have when it comes to any one of these or unmentioned legislative issues? So with that, we are going to start with the agendas and the, within the packet are copies of what are now formatted legislative agendas for your consideration and review. They look similar, but have substantive differences between the past pre-legislative agendas that your GR teams have put together using this specific format. Again, the federal is reliant on guiding principles. The state relies on guiding principles and legislative priorities for the county and, and for Clean Water Services. So as a reminder, our agendas serve to guide our legislative, regulatory and other policy work, not just for the GR team, but for all of your county departments as they are asked questions, either by your GR team or by their associations. And when they're representing Washington County, they use these agendas to answer those questions. With that, just a quick reminder of where we are on the timeline. We're getting towards the end of the agenda development timeline, which means we are hopeful that next week you will be comfortable to approve these agendas. And we will start with the process of the legislative session coming in January. The next time you see a timeline slide, it's going to have the legislative timeline on it, which will start on January seventeenth. The state session will begin and run through the very end of June, given that nobody finishes a budget early. On that note, I will turn it over to Zachary to, I'm going to hand that down.
Oh, thank you. Commissioners, for the record, my name is Zachary Khan, Government Relations Manager here at Washington County. What you see on this slide is the kind of table of contents plus structure of the document for the proposed twenty twenty-three state agenda. State agenda updates. So we've really enjoyed being a part of this process of working in a methodical sense with our county partners, as well as listening to the feedback that the Commissioners were be, were able to provide to us of the last time that we were here. And so what we've tried to do in the state agenda document is to tell the story of what Washington County is currently experiencing. Working with updated language on guiding principles, priorities and service levels, service level principles. And then also keeping in mind equity all throughout the process. But on that equity note, we do want to know that we are still working on developing our equity legislative tool and that we are also engaging with community stakeholders, especially as bills come back to us. On this slide, we just wanted to pause and ask if there's any questions, comments or any concerns to address within that state agenda document, as well as ask, are you ready to approve the agenda next week?
I have just one thing and that is on page eleven, under economic development. It says protect Oregon Strategic Investment Program, blah, 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 blah. But if you compare that to page seven, we talk very clearly about supporting the extension and enhancement. And I've been pretty vocal that the parameters of the SIP program as authored in thirty years ago in nineteen ninety-three would no longer serve the county well at all in twenty twenty-three moving forward. So my concern is that I think we need to swap out the word protect and put those two in alignment. That's, that's all.
That is very doable. We can do that and turn it around in time for the thirteenth. If that's the will of the Commission, I'm looking at the two that are here. My presumption is based on previous conversations that this board has had and directing us on the agenda that it, that would be agreed to. So I will make that change before we get the materials into the packet.
What are you going to use?
We will use enhance and modernize as per the recommendation with, yeah.
Or enhance and extend or extend and enhance, same exact words.
Does that mean lowering the limits from a hundred million down to like thirty or forty? What is?
The other way around.
Based on the conversation.
You want to go up?
I think based on the conversation that we had in November, my assumption that modernization is looking at the community fee that is paid as a payment in lieu and making sure that that's sufficient to meet county needs to pay for the services that are replaced when the property taxes are foregone or under that, and that hundred million dollar threshold is the amount of investment. That is not the part that I heard conversation around. If that is part of the conversation, we definitely have to work through the semiconductor task force. And that group.
No, what we talked about at that task force is we can only tax up to a four hundred minimum. That same equipment, if it had been indexed, that one hundred million dollar level would be two hundred million dollar level. That was our conversation.
Okay. I, I apologize. I will.
I, I, just what I understand, we don't need to dwell on it, but I, we had such a big limit on the amount here in urban area versus it was being done in Trineville, for instance. Are we going to be able to qualify smaller, big investments? I mean, we're going to have.
They're capped at fifty million.
Yeah, they are. But we're higher. We're, we're a hundred. But that's not part of what we're talking about doing is trying to reduce that capsule. We, oh, I see what you're saying.
Yes.
Basing the caps so that the investments are larger to justify the investment.
I, I meant one billion is what I meant.
We'll work on all of the caps.
I get it.
We know the limits are thirty years old.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
We're not going to accept anything lower than a two hundred million. But it should be a lot different.
So I, I agree. I was going the wrong way. I was thinking we, we want to draw more revenue for a longer period of time.
So maybe the word modernized is a better word.
Yeah. So I will use modernize and replace the protect with modernize. The SIP and gain share agreements as important economic development tools for attracting new investment and encouraging additional investments from Oregon's existing businesses.
That was the only change I had.
Are there any other changes or concerns related to this state agenda? We will also fix any typos we kept in the meantime.
Scrivners errors you.
Thank you. And we'll turn it over to Tracy now for Clean Water Services.
Thank you and good afternoon, Chair Harrington and Board of Clean Water Services. I am Tracy Rainey, Senior Policy Analyst for Clean Water Services. And I am pleased to have the opportunity to provide. Okay, we'll do that. Pleased to have the opportunity to update the board today on our draft state and federal legislative agenda and priorities. I will note that there have not been many significant changes made to these items since we last met in October. But I'll be sure to note where there have been some slight modifications that have been made and one addition since we last met. So I'll first review the state legislative agenda guiding principle and then the legislative priorities after that. Our state guiding principle has not changed since we did last meet in October. We believe this guiding principle statement does a very good job of broadly reflecting our organizational priorities and those key areas of focus that we are looking to promote and preserve at the state level. So move into the specific priority items. These are intended to capture specific issues and efforts that we believe are relevant or that are likely to be topics of discussion at the state level. These issues are largely unchanged from the work session in early October, with the exception of the last bullet item on that list regarding supplemental state funding for low-income household water assistance. During the October work session, the board had suggested that this should be added as a state priority in addition to being a federal priority item. And we believe that addition makes sense as this item is expected to be up for consideration during the two thousand and twenty-three legislative session. So that addition has been made for this particular side in their state priorities. I'm happy to pause and take any questions or feedback on the state priorities.
The only comment I have is the priority of promote industrial infrastructure readiness isn't clear at all. It doesn't say anything with regard to for water or anything. It just, it's a blanket statement. So that is the only one that leads to a question. But at the same time, I'm not willing to hold it up at all. But for next year, I won't support that statement.
Noted and thank you, Chair. And I, I would imagine we may be able to make some adjustments to that to specify that that is related to the water infrastructure that is necessary to support industrial expansion. So noted on that. Any other questions or comments? All right. And we will move into, I believe I'm handing this over to Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. My name's Tom Powers and I'm one of the Government Relations Managers. We are moving now to the proposed twenty twenty-three federal agenda for Washington County. And you'll see kind of the outline of how it's organized there. And then we'll move now to the next slide just to get into some of the changes that have occurred and are proposed from our last presentation to you on November eighth. And so you'll notice a new version of the descriptive introduction to Washington County, who we are, how the government serves the people in Washington County. And this is a revision that also has a little bit of a higher level update to Washington County being described as how it impacts and is intersecting with work at the federal government level. So you'll see a little bit of description about how Washington County works with its cities as well as the service districts. And then if you look at the guiding principles for the federal agenda, there were updates to, to principles in particular. One of them is from board discussion around changing the principles, support policies that enhance economic growth while promoting a healthy and sustainable environment to support policies that enhance economic growth while advancing a healthy and sustainable environment. And second, there's a new principle that is related to workforce pursuant to your board's request at the last time we discussed this federal agenda. And you can read that in the packet. And so to follow up, does your board have any questions or a need for additional information before moving the federal agenda towards adoption?
I don't. And I, I followed the, the memo. I appreciated that too. What the federal topic brings me kind of back to the state. The part that I don't, my information need, I don't believe comes in for these updates. Okay. But rather entertaining questions about, okay, there's been this federal CHIPS act and there's this state semiconductor task force and there's an initial report, but expectation that there's a follow-on report coming. And it just sounds like, given the unknowns, there's a lot of positioning that we're just going to, as a county. And it just sounds like, given the unknowns, there's a lot of positioning that we're just going to, as a county, or some county in the metro area is just going to get rolled. And that's an uncomfortable place to be. So it would be great if you could come back in January and give us an update as to what you understand is happening with said task force and that we have some general sense of what the board's comfortable with, with our story. And so we're not making up five on any given day.
There will be some of that a little bit later today when we're talking about the legislative updates.
Oh, awesome.
Some of it, I will also say, it hasn't been completely on.
Target.
Yeah, yes, all things.
You're doing great.
But we will tell you where we've moved so far.
Okay, great. I've been on the journey with you here. I'm good. Keep going.
Okay, seeing nothing else, we will turn it to Tracy for Clean Water Services.
Thank you. The Clean Water Services federal guiding principles have not changed since we last presented to the board in October. This list reflects many of the issues that we are currently working on already, as there are some that have carried over from last year. And those issues that we believe will be discussed or contemplated at the federal level in the near future. This includes issues that the National Association Clean Water Agencies has been engaged in. If there are any principles that the board would like some additional information on or has any questions on, I will pause to allow for that.
My only concern is that with things changing at the Fed, is that going to increase the risk of funding solutions for the Skoggins Dam seismic replacement project? Or is it just, you know, continuing resolutions? Good heavens. How do we ride that risk wave other than we're on it and take out your best surfboard?
That's a great question, Chair. And that's, I mean, and largely why we have this ongoing principle included on, on this slide. And part of our federal agenda is to keep that, kind of that pressure up. A lot of it is going to be, yeah, a lot of it's going to be programmatic funding now that we are in the Safety of Dams program specifically. So it's just making sure that we remain a priority for the Bureau of Reclamations. A lot of ongoing conversations and pushing and encouragement.
Okay, okay.
Yep, I wish it were more certain than that. So moving.
But that's, that's, that's the surfboard I needed to understand.
Yes, got it. Thank you. Moving into our federal priorities, which are intended to reflect more specific action items that we anticipate engaging in throughout the coming year. Most of these priorities are unchanged since we last presented to the board. I will say with the exception then of that last item, which has been revised, we did broaden this language a bit on that last bullet point to reflect the anticipated twenty twenty-three farm bill and the importance of that legislation, including for water quality and habitat. So just a little bit of an adjustment there to keep that broad. Other than that, that is the only change that has been made since we last met. And I'm happy to take any questions or comments that you have on these priorities.
Got it.
Okay, yep. And then I think I am turning it back over to Erin.
So we will work, just to wrap up that, we will work to make those couple of changes in the documentation and have it all prepared and ready for the packet for the clerk as quickly as possible. But we have an expert who puts these beautiful drafts together and we, you won't have time to do it tonight. But we will get the materials as quickly as possible with those changes reflected in the agenda for your adoption at next week's board meeting in the action items. So now we're going to turn to the legislative updates. And we thank you for your consideration and reading over these agendas multiple times. So just to center us of where we are as far as what we know about the legislative process, we are entering legislative days starting tomorrow. And for the first time in two years, lobbyists have been welcomed back into the building.
Starting tomorrow?
Starting tomorrow. They have opened up the hearing rooms so that we can attend in person. Previously, it was only legislators and their staff in the building. They were meeting regularly in person because the rules of procedure require them to be there for votes. So they have been meeting in the building. Lobbyists and the general public weren't really allowed in the building. That is changing now.
Go team, go.
Yeah, so we're very excited to pick that commute back up.
Especially in the winter.
Oh, yeah, it's my favorite. I hope everything's frozen tomorrow morning. To that end, during the legislative days, we will be continuing to learn what is really being prioritized and what those conversations are kind of shaping up to be. Today, we are hitting the hottest topics that we are aware of that have impact on the county. And we will be continuously looking at all of the concepts and using our written updates to the board as a means of communicating what is happening. And obviously, we will continue to work with our departments and using the principles and priorities that are addressed here to do our analysis. We are also getting our bill tracking system up to snuff so that all of us can do the work that we need to do as efficiently as possible. And then finally, just as a reminder, as I stated at the beginning, we have included a list of some LCs in these slides. And what we're looking for there is kind of a general thumbs up that we should continue down the process so that we can get them what's called pre-session filed, which means that they will be available as bills on that first day of session. So that's what we're working on right now and what we're asking for as far as on the LCs is just to continue to move forward. And those are, of course, based on the priorities and principles that we've been working with you through the course of this fall. So I will turn it over to Tom.
Thank you, Erin. So I'm going to hit the high points of some of the legislative updates for the areas I represent right now. And so we're going to start out with Measure one fourteen implementation. And as you know, we've been on a journey today with the status of Measure one fourteen. And I know County Council Brad Anderson has been keeping you updated. And we've been following along and trying to figure out what's next. And I think that's.
I, I should note that Tom, Tom clued me on to the state case, so.
It's credit for that one.
Enjoy the roller coaster.
Yeah, so the Harney County Circuit Court Judge has put it on hold for now and we'll see what happens. In the meantime, but we are going to hear some updates from the Oregon State Police and potentially other players within the Measure one fourteen space during the legislative days hearings. So I know the Senate Judiciary Committee is going to be holding a hearing specifically on this issue. And there's lots of conversation about what the legislature will need to do when it comes into session in January to modify or what pieces are left of Measure one fourteen. If it's all in place, I think these are all the different scenarios that are under consideration right now for the potential action. And a big piece of that will be the funding to deliver these services. That, looking at it from a county perspective, local government plays a really big role in determining and issuing permits for the purchase of firearms. And so that's an open question that the legislature will need to deal with in the next session. And we expect that the beginning of that conversation formally will take place during these legislative days hearings.
It just dawned on me, one fourteen. And this may be something that Daniel needs to do. But in anticipation of our AOC steering committees in January, it would be helpful for the board to have what was the election result for one fourteen for each of the thirty-six counties? And then generally, what were the results within Washington County in probably the urban area versus the rural area? We will work with the Elections Department, Daniel, and everyone else.
So if there's nothing more on Measure one fourteen, I'll turn to another issue, aid and assist in the Oregon State Hospital. Just to hit some of Brad's favorite issues today. So they're not just allowing lobbyists back in the state Capitol, they're allowing attorneys as well. And so Brad will be presenting.
Subject matter and experts.
On the aid and assist issue, along with some other experts on the issue regarding how counties are responding to the Judge Mossman order with aid and assist and timelines for patients at the Oregon State Hospital. And so that will be a big subject, not just in the Senate Judiciary Committee, but also in the Behavioral Health Committee on the House side. On Thursday, there will be a hearing with a number, I think, more than a dozen folks talking on that issue, one of which is District Attorney Kevin Barton from Washington County. So a couple of Washington County players will be. Right now, we're just kind of in the process of looking at the different committees, what we expect they'll be voting on to introduce at their meetings for the rest of this week. And then trying to also gather information for individual legislator bills and agency bills that have been filed that will be before the twenty twenty-three legislature.
Do we have, or should we develop a principle regarding having an effective complete system? Because as I, I was looking under public safety earlier, I was probably looking in the wrong place.
Sure, Chair, I can open up the, the county service specific guiding principles, which is on page, I believe it would be page twelve.
Yeah.
State Agenda. And it is a, a couple of principles that could be responsive to the issue of the need to find unrepresented defendants' representation.
Yeah.
And I think that would be the first point, which would, under public safety.
Yeah.
And then I believe the third point, which would be.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Legislation that promotes equity, justice, and community safety. So those two taken together, I think, would be a lens by which the county and your team could
Good.
review these proposals and come up with a position.
Because I want to make sure it's clear, because our district attorney came out with a pretty strong political statement that rubbed many wrong about the public defender system and employees thereof. And I want to make sure that our guiding principles, priorities, agenda is clear that we need to have a working system. Thank you.
Yes, yeah, I think the principles would also support other elements of the public safety system that we also need to function. The, the public defense crisis is the most pronounced issue right now.
Hey, but I'm willing to continue carrying the, the water on the community corrections and the actual cost study. That worn-out record.
And so I'm going to switch gears to public records instead of public safety, talk about public records. And just a little bit more specifically about a concept that a group called the Public Records Advisory Committee is advancing in the next legislative session. I think I did speak briefly to your board about this topic maybe two months ago. But this is a specific proposal from this entity called the P R A C. And that group, just by way of explanation, is a state board. It's made up partially of folks who represent government bodies that are subject to public records requests. And it's also made up partially of media journalists and folks who are typically requesting records from public bodies. And the group has advanced legislative concept that would generally limit the fees that government bodies can charge to records requesters. And it's a little bit narrowed from what they originally had. But overall, it would define media as a certain group of people who are passing on information. And it would deem all media requests to be in the public interest. And therefore, a waiver would automatically be issued for any fees charged to procure those public records for the requester. And so this is a concept that will be entered into legislative session and will go to a committee. There will be a lot of discussion on this legislative concept. But I think right away, there are a lot of implications there for costs. And, you know, the ability for the county to focus on the services it needs to provide as mission-critical services. So this will be a thing that will continue to follow throughout the process. We don't know which committee it will necessarily go to, but just flagging that for interest right now. And if there are no, oh, go ahead.
And if I may interject, Clean Water Services is also watching that as, as part of our joint efforts to work together to make sure that on these general public interest that Clean Water Services shares with us. So we'll be coordinating with them as well.
Okay, and without any other questions on that, I will turn it over to Zakir.
Thank you, Tom. As has been a persistent theme in the health and human services sector, recruitment and retention still speaks very loud. And so this is something that the, some of the committees on the healthcare side are continuing to examine, including the Behavioral Health Committee, that is sharing updates on investments that were made in the last couple sessions to discuss where the money is essentially going and how the rollout of several programs is happening. I'll, I'll also just add here that this is extremely important to county staff as I've been into in internal discussions. This is something that's also on their radar persistently. In addition to that, public health modernization, the policy option package is coming in the next legislative session from the Oregon Health Authority. They have asked for two hundred and eighty-six million dollars, a hundred and ten million specifically going to local public health authorities. And so this is something that will be considered as the governor's transition team kind of works to figure out what the budget is going to be. On the revenue side, they're continuing to review the property tax exemption programs. And in fact, they're trying to just build a kind of base of knowledge for the entire committee. So they've actually been spending three days reviewing the property tax system. One meeting was last week and there's two this week. The first day was just an overview of the property tax system. The, the second day is administration, and the third day is data and analysis. And I think that they're doing a actually really good job of this in terms of building that public awareness so that there can have a common language as these issues are discussed in the next session, especially as it relates to the semiconductor task force work. Any questions here? Well, I will move to the next slide, which is legislative concepts. So since I began at the county, I have been hearing about that workforce situation. So I've been actually working to craft some policy language around some of the solutions to these issues. So we have three legislative concepts that we have had drafted. The first is LC seventeen eighty-six, which we are deeming the Thrive Act. And this is similar to a twenty-one, but behavioral health workforce bill that really addresses the board's concerns about work, making workforce a priority and is really responsive to that. And so this is really a, a piece of legislation that is responsive and proactive and not investing in the workforce. And also in terms of creating that pipeline development. So just as means of background here, just returning to the conversation that we had just like a month ago. Oregon does not have a sufficient pipeline development, which is why our, our systems are so strained today. And as the pandemic has worn on, both in the health and human services sector, workers have gotten, gotten extremely burnt out. They've left those positions. The pay has not been adequate. And so it, and some of them have just left to other states where they can get higher pay. So this bill is directly to, to help combat that crisis and to directly fund both counties as well as pipeline development entities on a multi-scale effort. The second concept here is the threat, what I'm giving the Thrive Two Act. This is LC twenty-eight, twenty-two, two, eight, one, zero. And this bill allows for counties to declare local workforce shortages in the realm of the health and human services sector based upon a series of triggers, which grants the counties and entities operating within the county additional compensatory, compensatory tools to counteract the shortage. And so what we saw, you know, as we did our analysis meeting with different county departments is in the human services sector, getting caseworkers was really difficult. And so that led, led to, you know, a lack of ability to support those community members because we just didn't have the capacity to take on that work. And so what this bill would do is it will grant additional compensation measures. And then LC thirty-five seventeen was originally in LC seventeen eighty-six, but because it was creating some new programs that needs to, needed to be pulled into a new measure. And so this increases funding for the development of career pathways in the behavioral health field to working with and really relying upon regional workforce boards, creating investments and coordination between the Higher Educating Courting Commission, the Oregon Health Authority, and counties, and understanding that counties are a really necessary piece in how we develop pathways. And just from speaking with our Behavioral Health Division, Nick Coan, within the past week, you know, he really has prided on himself on really being proactive and innovative in terms of how you get workers to Washington County. And this bill is something that will help in terms of increasing our capacity to do that. So just a couple of questions to pose here. If you have any questions, comments, or concerns about these proposals. And the second question here is, are you comfortable with these bills being introduced on the first day of session on behalf of Washington County?
One, two, three, go.
I have two questions. You got two, so that's fine. One is that funding is always a zero-sum game, it seems like. You know, there's only so much revenue.
Yeah.
Do any of these take revenue away from traditional workforce systems?
No.
Oh. So that kind of comes, my first one is, are you asking, it doesn't say how these new incentives are going to occur. I assume that it's going to be additional state funding, it doesn't say that.
Yeah, so this will be coming out of the general fund. So it's not taking away from other measures.
The state, not our general.
Of the state, yes, of the state.
Okay.
I'm not.
Oh, it's clear, it's clear in these concept, concept bills, it's it's state money and okay, it's not taking away from anybody else.
No.
Yeah, okay.
So do we, who will be championing this, like, or is that the next step?
Yeah, so also, the the first two measures on this list, Representative Bynum has agreed to introduce them on behalf of Washington County. The third concept, we're currently at the moment exploring who will be bringing up this measure. We just found out last week that this this portion was going to be split off of the original bill because of an L C or Legislative Council opinion that came in. So I've asked at least one local legislator who was just selected to if they would introduce this bill on behalf of the county. If not, I've also connected with the chair of the Healthcare Committee, Representative Rob Nose, if he would introduce this as a committee bill. And seeing as behavioral health workforce is one of his priorities this upcoming session, I think there's a high likelihood that the backstop of the of the committee bill being an option is something that will certainly be entertained. But in the meantime, I'm just going to hustle and try to find a sponsor as well.
What company uses Representative Dr. Lisa Reynolds on?
I believe she's on healthcare at the moment. But as the next session comes, she may be switched to another place.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Few thumbs up.
Sure, now that I understand, we're not paying for it.
We're getting paid for it.
I'm getting money from W S I, I'm okay.
I think that's the job for our lobbyists, to get us money. Always.
Double agent.
With that, I'll turn it back over to Aaron.
Almost in a homestretch, but nothing like transportation to derail a conversation.
Enough about tolling so far today, no?
Terribly sorry for what I'm about to say.
I tried you, no, no.
So I was, I I was able to catch part of your conversations this morning when you were talking about the ongoing regional transportation and what the legislative role is in all of this. And so hopefully, this is going to be a little bit more informed than my original.
Clear as mud for me.
Perfect.
You will provide clarity no matter what.
So there are two big things that are going to come up in the transportation world. One of them is a literal bridge that is crossing a river to get to another state. And that is going to have tolling implications and a result of the need to raise sufficient revenues to pay for the local the shared local share between the state of Washington and the state of Oregon. Only a quarter of what we're talking about for the price of that bridge is going to be covered by tolling. But as a result of the way our statutes are currently written regarding tolling revenues, they do have to open those tolling statutes back up, which is always a super not at all tender or difficult conversation in the legislature. But in order to properly share the revenue with the state of Washington, while Oregon would be collecting the tolls, we need to be able to then hand some of those revenues over to the state of Washington because it's half theirs and half ours. So we will, of course, be watching anything that opens up the tolling statute like we did in two thousand and twenty-one with House Bill thirty fifty-five.
If they told their half of the bridge and we told our half of the bridge. I'm sorry, too much fun.
Yeah.
I'll get back on track.
See what you did there. Oh, yeah. We will get some light rail in there somehow. So there there is that technical work that has to be done related to the interstate bridge. I will also, as we noted in the election results presentation, we do not have super majorities in the House or the Senate, and therefore, we have to raise enough votes to raise revenues, and that requires us having bipartisan support for any revenue additions. And therefore, it is likely that any interstate bridge replacement revenue package will have more than just an interstate bridge included. That package is still being negotiated. There's a new governor coming in, there's votes to count, and it is super fun and very exciting. It is unlikely that you'll see any other bridges within the greater metropolitan area as part of that vote count. But maybe. In addition to the I B R revenue questions, ODOT itself has been facing some issues related to its financing. While House Bill twenty seventeen invested in a lot of large projects and set up a lot of different programs, ODOT has stated that it has not created a sustainable fountain of revenue related to maintenance and operations costs. And they are now looking for ways to pay for that within the state system, which does have effects on local governments. In particular, there's conversations around how the D M V itself, the Department of Motor Vehicles, are going to be sustaining themselves, and so they're looking at a fee bill for that. But on top of that, how we do road maintenance and how the state pays for all of this is kind of still a huge question with, as Commissioner Rogers, you noted, the gas tax is not doing what it used to do. While we expect there will be continuing conversations around road user charge or some alternative to the gas tax, I am not, I would not prognosticate successful passage of any bill in two thousand and twenty-three, but it's still going to be part of the conversation. The other and more concerning part of the conversation is related to the State Highway Trust Fund Exchange, where we take our federal dollars, we give them to the state, they pay us slightly less than a dollar to dollar. ODOT has declared that they would like to pay us even less for our dollars or stop paying altogether and hoard all that money for themselves. And we inform them that that's now how a good transportation system is maintained. We're letting A O C and the County Roads Fund kind of take point on this, but we are engaged actively through our L U T department at Oasis, which, if you ask me what that stands for at this point in the day, I cannot recall, but is essentially our transportation program managers across all thirty-six counties participate in that. A O C is actively involved. Brian Worley with the County Roads Program is taking point on that. We are also listening to what our cities are saying because this affects all local governments and how we are able to do our maintenance and and leverage the dollars that are available across the state. So that conversation will continue into the session. And another happy and completely other type of infrastructure that we need to discuss is the housing and homelessness issues will, of course, be top of mind for everyone that is, I think you saw, the center of many campaigns at the state level. And the one that I mentioned here is the Housing Needs Analysis Recommendations. As was mentioned in the memo to your board a couple of weeks ago, the state had made that draft that D L C D had put forward. Add urbanized counties in in ways that we felt were not appropriate or paid for. And we have since sat down with them, with our technical staff and their technical staff in Clackamas County as well, to kind of discuss what was actually intended and who, in fact, should be doing that work. And really, the end of that conversation was as optimistic as I get when it comes to land use policymaking, they've realized they lacked nuance. And really, what they're looking for is making sure that someone is responsible for planning in urban unincorporated areas for the level of housing that has to be divvied out through the Housing Needs Analysis the state provides. And we said that is traditionally the job of cities. And you, we really need to have a conversation about what your realistic expectations are within the metro area. They agreed to continue that conversation, and we are going to work with our local partners to make sure that any legislative concept that comes out of anything written in the ONA reflects the real roles that every level of government has to bring to the housing solutions and housing productions market and making sure that there are ways in which those areas that are inside urban growth boundaries, whether they be urban unincorporated or new lands, will be properly planned for by the right level of government, i.e. cities. We'll tell them later. And speaking of cities, what is not bullet pointed here is something that I've been trying to do some research on, but I'm sure you've heard word that there is a statewide city ask related to homelessness financing. Every city in the state through the League of Oregon Cities is putting forward big request for sustainable funding to help them address what they see as their role in the homelessness services, primarily looking at refuse pickups and that type of things and or capital projects where they buy, they build shelters and that type of physical capacity. That statewide ask does not look at counties and our our level of government and the roles that we play and the resources that we need out of the state in order to continue our successes that we've seen through our S H S work and the just day-to-day work that our H H S and housing team and community development all do. So one thing I will note is that we have had outreach from the City of Beaverton asking for an endorsement of partnership that we have. We have, I have not answered that request. I wanted to speak with the board and get a little bit more details out there. At this point in time, it's unclear what new resources they would be tapping into to Commissioner Rogers. Your point is there's just only so much money, and we need to really evaluate what it is the county needs versus where the cities are at at this point in time. And it's my recommendation that we watch this space and we try to work and coordinate with our our city governments before we make any position known related to their request.
Well, I may be a little further behind in terms of representation of problems. But I'll paint this picture anyway. So we have this first time, ten years worth of funding for services. And what we're finding is we have the money for the services. We're challenged by the workforce to deliver those services. And we're challenged by the, while the state has enabled more shelter siting in our metropolitan area, we're challenged by land sites. So the city proposal doesn't solve either one of those problems, as far as I know. If they have more state resources for cities to acquire the sites, great, we still have the service money, we'll just be, continue to be challenged with the workforce. And we're working diligently on finding that workforce, but retaining that workforce is hard and training up that workforce, so. But if it's just give us more money, I don't think we can sign on to that. But I haven't seen the request.
Yeah, and I will get that over to you, David. Done a little digging with some of my fellow counties as well. So that, those are the two big things in the housing and homelessness space. I will say, a lot of the other Housing Needs Analysis Recommendations are really focused on things the state should be doing, like bringing money to bear to address infrastructure and other needs where really money is the solution, which is very actually rare. So hopefully, we can be very supportive of a lot of the recommendations. We just need clarity in the land use sphere of who's really on the hook and who is really responsible for the the level of planning needed. So to get to the semiconductor task force and what is happening, as far as I know, at this point in time, there will be a hearing this week, twenty minutes on this subject, kind of talking through some of the education and workforce pieces of that. But it is pretty much consensus around the G R table that we need to come in quickly in order to be responsive to what the feds have told us they want to see. Because the state of Oregon is going to request that we be considered one of those regional hubs for semi, for development money out of the U S Chips Act. So there's a bunch of money in that bill that's directed at private investment and and the work of the businesses. But there is another smaller subset of money to kind of set up regions within the United States from the government side to be prepared to work towards that and to become competitive in that, we need to make sure that we can show to the federal government that we, as a state, are serious. And the other piece of all of this that I will say, I think, is really important is that these investments that are being talked about related to semiconductor branch beyond semiconductor and chip manufacturing and into advanced manufacturing in general. So the the package that they're looking to do really quickly is related to local incentive tools such as SIP and gainshare in enterprise zones and getting those kind of ready and and fully completed so that we can say we've got the local incentive pieces in places where local governments will continue to use them and that they meet the the business needs. So this is where we have the opportunity to really go after that modernization is in this initial set of packages to make sure that the local incentive tools are those that we can actually use and benefit from and not just in the nineteen ninety terms of benefit, but benefit in in the local context of, or in the modern context of two thousand and twenty-three like we discussed. The next piece of that is kind of looking at what it's going to take to do some initial investments in land readiness because having lands that aren't, as the port discussed, related to how long it's going to take something, a piece of property become shovel ready. We need to show that there's investments in that. Where this becomes a contentious issue is what lands? And it's what, not wet. What lands are we talking about and how do we designate them? And that conversation is reliant on some ongoing studies that should be done by the end of the month. And so I can give you more information once I've seen that report.
Who's doing the study?
Mackenzie with the partnership with the Portland, the Port of Portland. And so it's kind of looking around the region and not just in Washington County. We've been talking with our colleagues at Clackamas County, and there's also the City of Gresham and and Port of Portland lands, all of those are in the mix. They are not just located here in Washington County, but really figuring out what lands of varying sizes might be out there. And there is going to be a land use conversation that comes with that in the metro area. And that is going to be a complicated conversation in which we have to assert where we sit when it comes to what land should be looked at and what land should not. And when the Mackenzie report comes out, one of those key components is what is its reserve status? And land that can be made ready, that is in rural reserves, is not really ready. And that's a question that the legislature may take up as to whether or not there needs to be reforms to the land use process writ large and then the reserves process specifically.
Well, it sounds to me like as soon as that that report is available, please send us the direct link. And any other credible information about what the semiconductor task force is doing? Maybe pointing us to some ledge day work session or whatever they call them.
Yeah, the meeting materials, so and those have not been uploaded the last time I checked, which may have been a few hours ago. So, but I will get you as much information as quickly as I had have it. And then we are coming back in preparation for the legislative session in January before the session starts. So we'll have another chance to have a conversation about what's really happening and what that package completely looks like.
Well, and it may be that there's so much to digest and figure out because this process is going to go quickly that we may have to use time on our roundtables in order to give board members the opportunity to hear information, digest it, ask questions, and basically just walk through it about potentially what this might mean or just potentially what we should look out for, just very conversational, not not directional deterministic.
Yeah, I will work with David and Miss Angie to make sure that we're prepared for that and and fit it in as we can as quickly as we can with as much background information for you to make educated decisions. The final piece that I think is really important that they're working on this package specifically with the workforce development boards, the community colleges and the universities is what that education and vocational tracks look like and the investments we want to see come early in the session. And then the final component, which isn't listed here because it doesn't have as much impact on the goals that we have, is the tax credits that would go towards research and development. Because I think at the end of the day, what they're really looking for in the semiconductor space in Oregon is not big fabs like they're touring in in Arizona right now, but the research and development capacity that we have, the population that we have that can, you know, work the smaller fabs, the advanced manufacturing businesses that support all of that research and development really is it's where innovation is going to happen is here in Oregon if we get our policies correct and see that investment. With that, if there's no questions on any of these small, but mighty topics.
I just want to make sure that I'm clear. These are, these are good goals for us to have as a state. It's really how do we solve the needs together? And how do we recognize? What are the different pieces that will lead to success? And I'm concerned that that will just be rushed. Oh, those are details we can And I'm concerned that that will just be rushed, oh, those are details we can figure out later. But some of those are details that will crush. Some of our local governments or even our school districts. Uh, potentially, and so how do we make sure we're not crushing but rather uh able to pull through together? And I'm not able to describe it any more completely than that, sorry.
Understandable. Okay, um, couple more slides, uh, so these are a couple of legislative concepts there. Um, I would give you the meat of them, but uh they're technical and I make Rob explain them to me every time I look at them. Um, but first, uh sixteen thirty five is addressing an issue that came up related to some litigation that the county faced, we had um. Entered a final land use decision and it was on local appeal and we hit a clock deadline. The, the applicant sued and basically cut off that local appeals process.
Yeah.
And so um, this is going to, so sixteen thirty five would be adjusting that um clock that basically says if the, we don't want to cut off the local appeals for counties. Um, this would sit in the principles related to efficiency and clarity for the Land Use and Transportation Department um that was listed in the state legislative agenda. Similarly, LC sixteen thirty seven, um, there is currently statutory requirement that there be clear and objective standards related to any housing development code. And it implies both inside and outside the urban growth boundary and that is challenging. Outside of the urban growth boundary where we're dealing with major things like goal five and our significant natural resources. Um, that kind of make a lot of that decision more relative to the um, the, the actual situation of the land and therefore is very challenging to write a specific, clear and objective set of standards. So what we would be doing in LC sixteen thirty seven was maintain that requirement inside the urban growth boundaries, including in urban unincorporated. But outside of an urban growth boundary that that requirement related to clear and objective development standards would be removed.
Um, but am I off base to bring up urban reserves because? I don't see how it's a problem in rural reserves. Do we still have the problem in rural reserves or is it just in the rural zoned areas in the urban reserves?
Yeah, it's, it's gonna apply to both sections because um urban reserves are not in.
Yes, I know, they're still rural zoned.
Yeah, right, exactly.
But they're different than rural zone land in a rural reserve.
Yeah, I mean, we could talk about the details about that, but it's.
I'm just, the only reason I raise that is because it may be a distinction with a difference.
Yeah.
That's all. Oh crap, okay.
Yeah.
Uncle, I get it.
So on these, again, this, this fits into.
Didn't take long.
That's why I call, I phone a friend, um, on the next, uh, really handy in this room. Um, so the, here again, we're just kind of looking for that generalized thumbs up, I need to get some bill sponsors on this one, um, looking at the area uh for legislators where their community got cut off in that appeals conversation and then making sure that our land use experts can. Um, reach, um, our, our, the land use committees feel comfortable passing these bills so that we have clarity and can process things um. More effectively for the county, so I'm just looking for a thumbs up to continue that work and, and overall management.
This is a long day, we've got another session tonight.
Yeah, uh, so this, this is a good news slide.
Yay.
Federal update, um, we got word that um from our, our friends at Van Scoid that uh. Ermers are likely to continue in the next session.
Ask for everything, ask for every idea you can think of.
We are, we are creating that, that, that kitchen sink list, um, we will work with the leadership teams to. Refine it and bring it to you so you don't have to consider the whole kitchen sink, but really consider what's going to be best positioned to move forward. Um, and we will have those conversations with you in January and February. Thinking of January and February, we thank you for your time, your attention, if you have any other questions.
Does the G R team get to take uh land holiday vacation time?
Yes, those of us that are continuing to. Have plans, we're making sure that we do take some time off before the crush of the legislative.
Thank you, that's, that was meant as uh employee support.
We will be back in front of your board in, on the thirteenth with the finalized agendas at the board meeting, and then we will be back for a work session in January. And then throughout the session, we'll be providing regular interludes with us to go over anything else that needs to be explained, and we will always have writing and always ask us questions. Um, anything final from Clean Water Services?
Nothing final, let you get on with your evening, it sounds like it will be delightful, um, but thank you for your time and, and for the conversation today, appreciate it.
Keep up the good work, really, thank you. And Tom, congratulations, uh, you're moving on and uh, Rob Wagner said to me like. Just before the election, one of Tina's uh campaign fundraising. And she said, you stole my chief of staff and now hindsight, I know, I should have said. Are you planning on stealing because I was supporting his presidency for senate, but I did not know, so. I'm on my uh, on foresight on that part, I sort of, but congratulations.
We didn't.
We wanted to come here. Steal you back, so uh, congratulations and we are expecting a lot of, all of these bills to go through.
Thank you for your work here, it's great, I'm sorry, your, your expectations for your career are so low, if you're going from the premier organ. You know, you gotta make that.
Thank you, commissioners, yes, I, I really enjoyed working here and you're treating me very well today.
I wonder why, I wonder why.
Yeah, I, I have truly enjoyed working here and, you know, I'll be here for another ten days, so. You have the opportunity to, you know, keep talking to me about stuff, but um, yeah, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here and to. Serve alongside you and to support this great community, I've learned a lot and I will not forget those experiences.
Well, thank you, really appreciate it and keep doing good work, I'm thrilled that you're continuing to work in public service. Yeah. And thank you to each of you, thank you for your patience uh as our previous topics ran over, good job on the agendas. Onward, how we go. Great, anything else for today? No, I think we're gonna adjourn the meeting. And we'll.